Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This is our last meeting of the calendar year 2006, Wednesday, December 20, 2006. To remind our viewers and guests, we will not be meeting this Friday for the holiday break, and we will be in recess for our customary two weeks. Council offices, of course, will be open and available on all non-holiday days, so the city is certainly not shutting down business. We just will not be meeting here in City Council chambers. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, and we meet at 10:00 a.m. here, except for the first Friday of the month, in which we are in Van Nuys City Hall in our efforts to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. We also take the show on the road most recently in San Pedro, and we look forward to some other neighborhoods we will bring the City Council to this year. Each meeting is broadcast live on Channel 35, which is available through the city's cable system, and we are also rebroadcast in the evening. We're available online as well through lacity.org, our city's homepage, where there's live streaming video of each of our council meetings. And finally, you can call in and listen to our council meetings, the audio portions of that via telephone, by calling Council Phone at (213) 621-CITY. So there are three different ways that you can listen to council meetings or watch us. We also invite you to come down and check out the live version yourselves here. We welcome public comment on items under our jurisdiction of a general nature, and also for items that have not had a public hearing in our committees. Each council meeting has an agenda which is posted online, and again, at our city's homepage at lacity.org. You can click through the links at City Council pages and find out that agenda, or come to the City Clerk's office 72 hours in advance and get a copy, or you can show up and get the agendas here, and we have a team of council ambassadors who are local high school students, well-trained in the ins and outs of our council meetings, who can assist you in the back of this meeting. Anybody wishing to speak should fill out a speaker card and give it to one of the sergeants at arms, and we'd be happy to consider that for the items that have been noticed for public hearing. Lastly, folks who live closer to Van Nuys, even when we meet here in downtown, we can hear you and see you via our remote facility in Van Nuys City Hall, so please utilize that if that's closer to where you live as well, and we are able to watch that here in Council chambers and on Channel 35. With that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardis, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum as president.
All right, first order of business, please?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, Mr. Parks seconds, if there's no objection. Let's go ahead and approve that next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. If there is no objection, those two will be approved. We next have a special presentation, and Seven Seals presentation. Colleagues, if I can ask you all to be in your seats for a special presentation for the 13 council members, sorry, the 12 council members that are here, and I'd like to invite Major General Peter Gravitt, the Chairman of the California ESGR, forward to the podium to begin a very special presentation that will be made this morning. Welcome, General, it's good to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor to be here this morning to recognize the City Council for support of the military reservists of the city of Los Angeles. I'm Peter Gravitt, I'm the California State Chairman of the Employer Support and Guard and Reserve, ESGR. We have about 125 volunteers in Southern California. Our agency is a Department of Defense agency, and we serve to support the reservists and employers, and serve as a link between the two. On the presentations this morning, we have 15 reservists who are all City of L.A. employees. And they will make the presentations. With me today is George Carroll, my Assistant Program Specialist, Tatiana Alvarez, and a special guest, Mr. Bill Houston, who is the Chairman Emeritus for California State ESGR. Bill? Our worst chairperson is Dr. Evelyn Robertson. Dr. Robertson, if you could stand, please, come over. Stand by. Hut! Take your positions. Some fine-looking city employees, no? Dr. Robertson, please.
The Seven Seals Award is the second highest recognition given from the Department of Defense. It is awarded in recognition of a significant organizational achievement, initiative, or support that is above and beyond the requirements of the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. As you are aware, California Guard and Reservists put their lives on the line for us, and we can't stress enough the importance of the support given to them from their employers while they are actively deployed. The Los Angeles City Council supports all L.A. City employees who are currently, who currently serve in the Armed Forces, Guard and Reserve, and City employees who are military veterans. Support in the way of enhanced pay and benefits for City employees serving in the Guard and Reserve comes directly from the City Council in the form of ordinances. For example, when Operation Noble Eagle was announced after the terrorist attacks on September 11, 2001, the Los Angeles City Council passed Ordinance 174264, which provided for a pay differential as Guard and Reserves were mobilized, and continues indefinitely as long as the employee is serving on active military duty. In addition, all L.A. City employees serving on active military duty in the Guard and Reserve continue to receive promotions, annual pay step advancements, medical, dental, and vacation and six-time benefits. These enhanced protections in the area of pay and benefits maintain the City employees' standard of living for their families, and also it gives great comfort to the families of the deployed City employees. Also, City Ordinance 166263 established the basic protective safety net for City employees serving in the Guard and Reserve. Admirably, this original ordinance has been repeated and strengthened by the Council for every national call for troops that has followed. The seven seals that are displayed on your award represent the Army National Guard, Army Reserve, Marine Corps Reserve, Navy Reserve, Air National Guard, Air Force Reserve, and the Coast Guard Reserve. For meritorious leadership and initiative in support of the men and women who serve America in the National Guard and Reserve, we honor you, the Los Angeles City Council members, and present to each of you, on behalf of the National Committee for the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, the Seven Seals Award. California Army National Guard Staff Sergeant Angelo Maldonado presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Ed Reyes. U.S. Army Reservist First Sergeant Timothy C. Cooper presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Wendy Gruel. U.S. Navy Reservist Lieutenant Commander Arthur C. Fong presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Dennis P. Zine. Army National Guard Staff Sergeant Christian R. Shaw presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Tom Labange.
It's LAPD Division, LAPD, Christian Shaw, LAPD West LA. I think we should introduce all their departments.
Army National Guard Sergeant William E. Anderson presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Jack Weiss. Army Reserve Master Sergeant Alex Nurse presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Tony Cardenas. Coast Guard Reserve Second Class Petty Officer Jocelyn Aquino presents the City, presents the Seven Seals Award to Alex Padilla, and accepting on behalf of Alex Padilla is Council President Eric Garcetti. Air Force Reserve Senior Master Sergeant Danielle D. Banks presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Bernard Parks. U.S. Navy Reserve Lieutenant Commander James Jensen presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Jan Perry. Army Reserve First Sergeant Marlo Cross presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Herb J. Wesson, Jr. Marine Corps Reserve Sergeant Anthony Choi presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Bill Rosendale. Marine Corps Gunnery Sergeant Steve Crawford presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Greg Smith. U.S. Marine Corps Master Sergeant Dennis Denoy presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Eric Garcetti. Army Reserve Major Scott Dewitt presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Jose Wezar. Petty Officer Second Class Marcos Hernandez presents the Seven Seals Award to Council Member Janice Han, and accepting for Council Member Han is President Eric Garcetti. Congratulations, thank you for all that you do on behalf of the Guard and Reserve and their families, and now, General Peter Gravitt will have closing comments.
General, if I may invoke the President's privilege there, I know some council members before you begin your comments who would like to add their good wishes, and let me begin as well. I know that it means a lot to all of us to have this award, and we hope that it serves an example to other levels of government, as well as to the private sector, on what it means to support our men and women who are wearing the uniform for this land. As a member of the Naval Reserve component myself, I know we have two veterans as well, Council Member Smith and Council Member Rosendale, who served, and we really do see the connection of a single-city family here, that sometimes occasionally wears different uniforms but is part of one, one effort to serve the people of Los Angeles and the people of the United States of America. This is the highest honor that we could receive as employers, it means a lot to me personally as somebody who serves with these men and women as well. We want to thank you and remember that while people are talking a lot about the troops that are deployed and what may happen, their futures, it is important for us to remember that they are deployed, and until the last man or woman is brought home from any conflict, that the support that they have is as critical on the last day as it is on the very first day. So we want to thank you very much, and I'd like to recognize Council Member Zine to make some comments first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge General Peter Gravitt, also a former member of the Los Angeles Police Department, retired from the Police Department, continued his service in the military, and also the Los Angeles Police Department, Dennis Denoy and his new partner, that serve in liaison to assist with this, and as the Chair of the Personnel Committee, we work closely to make sure that this council and this city supports all of the members of the military, our city family that's involved in military service, and we have the three departments with the highest number of reserves within the Los Angeles City family, LAPD, L.A. Fire Department, and the Department of Public Works, and all of the reserves that serve our country. My congratulations to you, and I know during this holiday season, we wish you and your families the best, those that are deployed overseas, we wish their families the best, and I want to express my appreciation for this award today. Thank you very much, and thank you for the service, not only to the people of Los Angeles, but to the people of America and your military service. God bless you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange?
I guess I didn't articulate myself well enough, members. I think we should put names to faces to where they work. Christian Shaw works in West Los Angeles Division, Los Angeles Police Department, lives in Wendy Gruel's district, and I think we should all ask where they work, so they, come up closer there, Officer Shaw, and see that they're all, which is so fascinating, fascinating that this city has a history which is so well-recited of always standing up for those who serve in the National Guard, and leave their post, leave their families. So I just wanted to take the moment, I was corrected by this fine Los Angeles Police Officer, said I did need to give him that recognition, but there's only one moment, and that's this moment, they're here now, we received this award, and I think each of them should be introduced as where they are assigned throughout the Los Angeles Police Department. From the Juvenile Division is Special Assistant Aquino, representing Mr. Padilla's district. So I wanted to ask you again to give that personal touch, if you would. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And maybe we could have each of the folks that gave us the awards just say which department that they work in, starting with Mr. Parks's aworder, you just say where you serve the people.
Officer Danielle Banks, LAPD Central Division.
Officer Scott Dewitt and I work out of Valley Traffic Division.
Marcos Hernandez, Juvenile Division, Internet Crimes Against Children Unit Management Assistant. before you begin your comments, who would like to add their good wishes, and let me begin as well. I know that it means a lot to all of us to have this award, and we hope that it serves an example to other levels of government, as well as to the private sector, on what it means to support our men and women who are wearing the uniform for this land. As a member of the Naval Reserve component myself, I know we have two veterans as well, Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Rosendahl, who served, and we really do see the connection of a single-city family here, that sometimes occasionally wears different uniforms but is part of one effort to serve the people of Los Angeles and the people of the United States of America. This is the highest honor that we could receive as employers, it means a lot to me personally as somebody who serves with these men and women as well. We want to thank you, and remember that while people are talking a lot about the troops that are deployed and what may happen in their futures, it is important for us to remember that they are deployed, and until the last man or woman is brought home from any conflict, that the support that they have is as critical on the last day as it is on the very first day. So we want to thank you very much, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Zine to make some comments first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge General Peter Gravitt, also a former member of the Los Angeles Police Department, retired from the Police Department, continued his service in the military, and also the Los Angeles Police Department, Dennis Denoy and his new partner, that serve in liaison to assist with this, and as the Chair of the Personnel Committee, we work closely to make sure that this council and this city supports all of the members of the military, our city family that's involved in military service, and we have the three departments with the highest number of reserves within the Los Angeles City Family, L.A. PD, L.A. Fire Department, and the Department of Public Works, and all of the reserves that serve our country. My congratulations to you, and I know during this holiday season, we wish you and your families the best, those that are deployed overseas, we wish their families the best, and I want to express my appreciation for this award today. Thank you very much, and thank you for the service, not only to the people of Los Angeles, but to the people of America and your military service. God bless you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange?
I guess I didn't articulate myself well enough, members. I think we should put names to faces to where they work. Christian Shaw works in West Los Angeles Division, Los Angeles Police Department, lives in Wendy Gruel's district, and I think we should all ask where they work, so they come up closer there, Officer Shaw, and see that they're all, which is so fascinating, fascinating that this city has a history which is so well recited of always standing up for those who serve in the National Guard, and leave their post, leave their families. So I just wanted to take the moment, I was corrected by this fine Los Angeles Police Officer, said I did need to give them that recognition, but there's only one moment, and that's this moment, they're here now, we received this award, and I think each of them should be introduced as where they are assigned throughout the Los Angeles Police Department. From the Juvenile Division is Special Assistant Aquino, representing Mr. Padilla's district. So I wanted to ask you again to give that personal touch, if you would. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And maybe we could have each of the folks that gave us the awards just say which department that they work in, starting with Mr. Parks's awardee, just say where you serve the people.
Officer Danielle Banks, L.A.P.D. Central Division.
Officer Scott Dewitt and I work out of Valley Traffic Division.
Marcos Hernandez, Juvenile Division, Internet Crimes Against Children Unit Management Assistant.
I'm Officer Tim Cooper, work the Bomb Squad.
I'm Detective Alex Nurse, I work Gang Operations Support Division, the Gun Section.
Officer Dennis Denoy, L.A.P.D. Military Liaison Officer, Ombudspur Office, Officer Chief Papa.
Arthur Fong, Senior System Analyst, L.A.P.D. IT Division.
Morning, I'm Officer Marlo Cross, I work Racer Division.
Equipment Mechanic William Anderson, Motor Transport Division, at a central station.
Officer Steve Crawford, Plan Research Division.
I'm Officer Anthony Choi with the Military Liaison Office also.
Management Analyst Angelo Maldonado, L.A.P.D. Operation Central Bureau.
James Jensen, L.A.P.D. Central Traffic Division.
The Seventh District should be acknowledged.
Please go ahead.
I'm Jocelyn Aquino, I work for Juvenile Division Abuse Child Unit, Los Angeles Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're all saying I started this, but I really didn't. But it's Chris Shaw, West L.A. Patrol, P2 for life, and I love it. But I just want to say one quick thing, when I got my orders, September 11th, 2004, it said 18 months I was being deployed to Operation Iraqi Freedom III, and I want to let you know, my heart rate was jumping because I live alone, I got a big mortgage payment, I just bought a brand-new car, and I was an E-5 at the time, which pays really nothing, like three grand a year, a month, you know, and L.A.P.D.'s paying me like $6,400 a month, so how am I going to make the difference? But I want to thank all of you for voting on that pay differential, because I tell you, that made a lot of difference, so I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, we've got three more people on the queue, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wear my hat from Post 283 with reverence and honor for the men and women around us at the horseshoe right now for leaving this great country and putting on your military gear and going over there and putting yourself in harm's way. That's the least we can do, is what we've done, and God bless you for serving our great nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be able to participate in doing this for these officers, men and women of L.A. City Departments. You know, we have a saying in the L.A.P.D. Reserve Program that really exemplifies what these men and women are, and we say, when you're a Reserve Officer in L.A.P.D., you're twice a citizen, and I think you, men and women, are more than twice a citizen, you're three times a citizen. Not only do you serve us on a daily basis as heroes, but now you put on the uniform of the United States and go over and serve again, that's incredible service, and I'm proud to have you here today, and proud to be a part of that. And I want to thank you for this star. My son is in the United States Navy, he's going on his first deployment in February to the zone, to the Iraqi Zone, and this means a lot, and I'm going to give this to my wife, I know she'll very much appreciate, so thank you, and God bless you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Gruel?
And I will be brief, I had wanted to introduce the individual who introduced me today, from the Bomb Squad, but what he said to me, when I asked him where he was from and when he presented this to me, his response was, "Thank you for supporting my family, my family thanks you." And I think that's what this is about, not only all of you, but supporting your family in a time of need, and being able to help you, whether you're single or you have a family, but you've committed your life to the city and to department, many of you in Los Angeles Police Department, you risk your lives every day, and then went and became part of the reserves to risk your lives. This means a lot. We get a lot of plaques and awards as elected officials, but this one is particularly special, and will go in a special place in my office, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done for us, and how well you've represented the city of Los Angeles and all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to thank Dennis Zine for his motion, he's the one who made that pay differential an issue, he's the one that made sure that the leadership of this council and this city followed through with that, and the reason why I wanted to mention that is because I just want to call out the newspapers, is sometimes they get petty about $10,000 here and $20,000 there, it's about the spirit of what the city is about, and that pay differential, I think, is well within the responsibility of the Charter, well within the responsibility of the Constitution of the United States, and well within our responsibilities as Americans. So thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. General?
All that I could say in my final remarks have been said, so I appreciate the time. I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief McDonald for the actual final remarks. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you very much, General, and thank you for being here and for your service. Just on behalf of Chief Bratton, who's not able to be here today, and for all the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, I'd like to thank you, the council members who represent us so well, and for your support to allow the proud people you see standing here before you, all L.A.P.D. officers, all very proudly serving both the city and our nation, certainly in a time when we very much need them on both fronts, but it's because of your support, the support of the mayor, the council, and our structure, our system, that the L.A.P.D. is able to provide the support that we do to our men and women serving both the Armed Forces and in the L.A.P.D. So a sincere thank you to all of you, happy holidays to all of you, and we move forward with a real optimistic and enthusiastic look towards 2007. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and finally, Mr. Parks wanted to add his good wishes as well, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank General Gravitt, many of you may not be aware, he was one of the original members that started the city's recruitment division within L.A.P.D. that's now moved on after all these decades to continue recruiting officers on the department, left it 20 years, and said that, at the time, he wasn't interested in becoming a lieutenant, so became a general, and so, obviously, I think he picked the right choice. But I had an opportunity to go to his change-of-command ceremony, and very impressive when he took over the whole state of California Reserve Force, and so I just wanted to thank him for being here and causing this to occur, and although I rarely try to compliment Dennis, I just will break my habit today and say thank you, because he's the one that's really led the charge on all of these motions to ensure that the city of L.A. did not forget its obligation to those who went back to the military, and want to thank all of our city employees, particularly L.A.P.D. officers who serve on a variety of levels, not only on the day-to-day basis in the city, but then go off and fight wars and come back and serve the city, and so thank you very much for your commitment.
Thank you.
In conclusion, I want to say that, and when I was a sergeant, I worked for then Lieutenant Parks, he was my commanding officer, so he taught me well. I want to thank you for the time, for the honor of being here, and attention, hut! Left and right, face, dismissed.
Can we ask everybody to come to the center, General? If you can have the men and women who are part of this come to the center here, we're going to take one group shot of everybody together.
Of all the reservists?
Yeah. Before they go.
Hold on. Hold up. Everybody come back.
All right, Mr. Clerk, if we can return to the next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request by the city attorney's office to continue Item 72, January 10th.
All right, is there any objection? Or do you want to hold that on the table for a second? Okay, let's get to that in a second, let's go to the other items. Okay?
Items on the regular agenda, Items 1 through 5 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing.
Okay, let's go ahead and open and close those public hearings. Let's go ahead, anybody wishing to call those special from the council? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 6 through 13 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Recommendation for council action is to continue the hearings and ordinances to January 12th.
Okay, if there's no objection, colleagues, we'll open those hearings and continue that till the 12th of January. Next items, please.
Items 14 and 15 are street vacation items, notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearings and instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on those two, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. As a reminder to the council, we will be sending everything forth with today. Next items.
Items 16 through 62 are items for which public hearings have been held, reports have been circulated on Items 21, 22, 38 through 40, 46, 52, and 62. Reports have been or are going to be circulated on Items 16 through 18 without recommendation. Motion to be required on those.
Okay, which item is the motion required?
16 through 18.
16 through 18, okay. Colleagues, any specials on these items? Mr. Zine?
21, please.
Yep, I was going to call that special, 21. 42 for Mr. Zine, 35 for Mr. Rosendahl, yes, Mr. Parks and then Mr. Wezar?
I have just a verbal technical motion for 38.
Okay, do you want to just give that right now?
Yes. On 38, that the $50,000 annual maintenance fee should be taken out of the tax reform account as the cost for the entire system, so the maintenance fee should come out of the same fund as purchasing the system.
Okay. All right, we'll add that. Mr. Wezar?
39 and 49, please.
39 and 49 for Mr. Wezar. Mr. Labange?
I've got a request for Item 36 to come back to committee. This is from the staff of the Seventh District. Just remind staff to go through Avacatalian, who is the keeper, is that the correct title?
He is the caretaker.
Caretaker, excuse me, so that...
It's like a keeper.
Coordinated. Thank you so much. 36, Hanson Dan back.
All right, if there's no objection, we'll send that back. Is that to your committee?
Yes.
Okay, no objection, we'll send 36 back to Arts Parks. Are there specials, colleagues? From those, yes, Mr. Reyes?
It's not a special, but I wanted to just quickly introduce a guest. Council colleagues, today I'd like to take the time to welcome the newly-elected mayor of Acamboro, Guanajuato, Licencier Cesar LaRondo Diaz, along with Alfredo Behar, who's a resident of Highland Park, also a track coach at Franklin High, and is also our graffiti guy from CCAC, helps us outkeep our neighborhoods clean, and he'll be hosting the mayor during his visit, as well as one of his students, Jaime Joaquín López. Bienvenidos a Los Angeles, y ojalá que podamos seguir trabajando juntos con nuestros jóvenes. Muchas gracias.
Bienvenidos. Gracias. Absolutely. Mr. Labange?
61, 62, is that still available for...
Yes, if you'd like to call those special.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Labange calls 61 and 62 special. Any other specials, colleagues? We're going to keep 16 through 18 on the desk till we get the reports on those, so let's call those special as well, and if we can open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 63 through 82 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have any cards on those?
There are cards on Item 74 and 82.
Okay, we'll call those two special for cards in the public, and we will open and close the public hearings on the others.
Item 77 special.
Sorry, which one?
77 special.
77 for Ms. Perry. Are there specials? Any other specials, colleagues? Number 70 will continue till the first meeting in January, the 10th, sorry, second meeting? All right, if there's no objection, we'll continue that, and on the balance, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 83 through 85 are the closed-session items, do you wish to hold those on the desk?
With one exception, oh yes, let's hold 83 through 85, we will hold on the desk. I'm sorry, did you also bring up 86? Let's hold that up. Is that closed session?
86 through 88 are on the special meeting agenda.
Okay, so let's go ahead and hold 83 to 85. Next items?
On the continuation agenda, Item 89 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration, and a substitute motion has been circulated.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing none?
Mr. President, there actually is a card on that item.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call that special for cards in the public, then. Next item? Sorry, that leaves which ones, Mr. Clerk?
That would close out the group of items on that, that would take you back to the items called special for the regular meeting.
On Item 88, there's a move to receive and file that.
88 is not yet, that's a...
Okay, we're going to wait till the hour for that. Okay, let's go ahead then and return to general public comment. At this time, I'd like to call forward Victor Castro IV for general public comment. Welcome, and you have two minutes to address the council.
I have these copies for council members.
The Sergeant-at-Arms, thank you.
Good morning, happy holidays, thank you for having me here. At this time of our society being so overwhelmed with so many issues worldwide as a nation, a state, a county, a city, and as a community, it is the sole intention to use this time to present this letter with respect and appreciation to the office of our Council District II Representative...
I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt you for a second so we can make sure we hear you. If I can ask everybody to please take their conversations outside, and if I can ask the sergeants-at-arms to assist, so that we can hear the proceedings of the meeting. The folks will either take their conversations outside, or keep the talking to a minimum. Thank you. Go ahead, we paused your time, please continue.
Thank you. Again, it is the sole intention to use this time to present this letter with respect and appreciation to the office of our Council District II Representative, but most importantly, to present this in an arena to thus help create awareness of our very desperate situation within our community. Regarding 8040 Foothill Boulevard, Solon, California, proposed Home Depot, Dear Councilmember Gruel, the Solon de Hanga Neighborhood Council forwards you this motion passed by both the DAC and the Solon de Hanga Neighborhood Council Board. We know that you support these findings, and we'll take immediate and public action on behalf of the community. The Design Advisory Committee of the Solon de Hanga Neighborhood Council and the Board of the Solon de Hanga Neighborhood Council...
I'm sorry to cut you...
...in response to the November 6, 2006, meeting with the Honorable Councilmember Wendy Gruel and other city staff, hereby request that the Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Gruel, bring the following matter to the full city council and the city attorney while the appeal filed by the noted Home Depot... while the appeal filed by the No To Home Depot campaign is pending. We demand a stop work order be issued at the site of the proposed Home Depot at 8040 Foothill Boulevard, Sunland, California, based on the following justifications. One, Mr. Keim, Code Enforcement Bureau Chief of the LA Department of Building and Safety, stated at the November 6, 2006, meeting that the auto repair use area must only be no use or a change-of-use application would be required. A change-of-use would trigger the project definition of the Foothill Boulevard corridor specific plan, which is a discretionary, not ministerial, action. Number two, the June 22, 2006, architect-approved July 21, 2006, Dan Scott City Planning, and July 24, 2006, Lily Ting Metro Plan, city-approved plans. The uses indicated in the plans are the storage, cash register, checkout, or pro-desk contract area. The city-approved plans, I will be out of time, and Ms. Clegg Horn will continue.
Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. I want to say, first of all, we have these very comfortable cushions here, and I want to thank the City Council because it's very uncomfortable sometimes when you sit in these chairs, so thank you for the great cushions. I don't come down there often to the City Council. I've got to make a living, but I took out time to come down here and wish everybody a very happy holidays. Now that Walmart's allowed me to say Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to all. And it was a moving presentation this morning, and I was very moved, especially you, President. You understand, you're a Naval Reserve, and LA is a wonderful city. I want to let you all know, I was here in April at the Valley Meeting, and I adopted a cat. And I have spent more time with that cat probably than anybody has spent time with their pet in the last eight or nine months. I want to thank you all for letting me adopt my great cat, which I've renamed from Cagney to Antonio Vierigosa in honor of our great, our wonderful mayor. And speaking of our wonderful mayor, I stopped by his office this morning, brought him a little note, which is between Antonio and myself, but he's doing a heck of a job, and I'm so glad, as a Republican, I cross over sometimes, a lot of my Republican friends don't like me, that I support Mayor Vierigosa. Well, it's too darn bad. He's a wonderful mayor. I'm so proud that he's the mayor, and I wish he and his family a very Merry Christmas. I also want to say that I went to see Guns N' Roses last night at the Universal Amphitheatre. I still call it Universal, even though it's now the Gibson Amphitheatre, and they're playing one more night tonight. I told Chief Parks, I want to do a Chuck Berry concert sponsored by the City of LA, since Axl Rose, The Rolling Stones, and The Beatles all modeled themselves after Chuck Berry, who's about 80 years young now, and I'll talk about that after the first of the year. I've got 12 more seconds. I want to say, have a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. There's a lot of problems in this country, but the LA City Council is not part of the problem. You're part of the solution. Thank you very much, and have a great holiday year. If you don't like what I just said, too darn bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker.
Good morning, sir. My name is Oscar Johnson, and I'm a concerned citizen and an activist for the homeless on Skid Row. And I'm determined to see Skid Row cleaned up. I see the homeless people's on Skid Row is predatory for praise, and I don't think that is Constitution right. Their rights are being violated every day when they're sleeping out and don't have no place to go. We need more job training. We need more positive programs for the homeless. And we also need an independent citizen review board for the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles Fire Department, because they are way out of line from what they do this is supposed to be about. And downtown Skid Row, you have a lot of food distribution, and that should be monitored more. People don't know what they're eating. You've got restaurants, you have convenience stores with buffet lines set up, and all over the city, you see A and B grade, and I don't believe those A and B grades are authentic. I think that's fraud. I think more should be did to clean up effort for the homeless in downtown Skid Row, and more money should, and more people should be concerned about the accountability of where they're giving their money to for things to be did for the homeless, because much of the money is not being received by the homeless that need to get better condition on Skid Row. Thank you. My name is Oscar Johnson.
Thank you very much. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Hawkins. As we continue to hire more committed board of the Garden of Reserve and workers for the tree trimming program, we must be very careful and mindful of how deep we are cutting all trees, because of all palm lines that are beneath the surface of all trees in each area of cutting beneath streets are more. It can cause palm lines trouble, pole line troubles, water, gases, electricity shock. Again, it is true that all that has tried to steal my duty are urine under my apartment is dead, with no court case date needed. As we continue to celebrate Christmas time, let's remember to stay out of trouble. I would like to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and especially to my wife, Lisa. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Cindy Clegg Horn, sorry, Cindy Clegg Horn is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. Thank you, and happy holidays. My name is Cindy Clegg Horn, and I'm here on behalf of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council. And picking up from where Mr. Castro left off, on behalf of the Neighborhood Council, we bring to you the letter that we distributed to you earlier, to bring to your attention that the Department of Building and Safety's permits for the proposed Home Depot in Sunland are being piecemealed. This site should receive the project determination. The safety of our families in Sunland Tahunga is at risk. We need your help in stopping these numerous piecemeal permits from being issued, so we hope for your assistance, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Craig Wilson. Welcome, Mr. Wilson. After that will be Candido Morris.
Good morning. I'm not used to doing this, but I'll give it a try.
Don't worry.
I live in Westchester. I was born in Chinatown in 1951. I'm part Cherokee Indian. I've six years in the Marine Corps, 31 years with Water and Power. I'm just a regular person. I live in Westchester. And I know some of you like to multitask while the speakers are speaking, but what I have to say will make some of you raise your faces towards me. I'm talking about the border situation. We don't, we don't, LA doesn't have a border with Mexico. We don't have fat men in lawn chairs on the border of Los Angeles. Our problem here in LA is not fat men in lawn chairs sitting on the border. We've got gang members killing children. I have a 14-year-old daughter. You know, in Long Beach, yesterday, a 14-year-old girl was killed. And you've got illegals coming here. They don't know how to put toilet paper in a toilet. They put it in a 50-gallon drum. There was a man who worked for Water and Power. He wasn't a Water and Power employee, but he was a security guard at one of the tanks. I go to San Inez Reservoir. I go to places like that daily on my job. And he had gonorrhea, and he's wiping that green stuff on a fence, because he doesn't know how to go to the doctor to get a shot. Now, I had gonorrhea when I was a young man. I went to the doctor, and the woman doctor went like this, and she gave me a shot. So it's a cultural thing. It's not a racial thing. If you want to pull the race card, you pull the Cherokee card, because that's part of my background. So you don't speak for me if you say it's okay for 6,000 people to cross the border every day illegally. You've got 6,000 people. I know I only have 20 seconds left, but it looks like the start of the Boston Marathon every night. You can look at the border. It's the start of the Boston Marathon every night. We can't absorb that many people. We can't afford it. Now, I'm not talking about Pedro and Maria who want to come here and work. It'd be nice if they'd come legally, but we've got gang members killing babies. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Candido Morris.
Mr. President, council members, Merry Christmas, good yentaf, and Happy Kwanzaa. We're ending another year. I've been here, in February, February will be 16 years that I've been coming here since 1991. And I have a few requests. I ask that since the shackles of term limits have been lifted from you, that we see some great things from you folks. We have a new year starting in January, and I hope to see some really exciting things take place. I would hope that you would protect the workers of this great city. I know I've been here over and over again, but when you have over $800 million spent in over 14 years, that's outrageous. That's taking away from your constituents. But more importantly, a lot of these cases could be settled if we did have a risk management unit. And Mr. Zine, again, I thank you for proposing that. Hopefully, we'll get that one day. And again, happy holidays, and we look forward to another year in January.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that will be Marvin Stewart.
John Walsh, I recently became an illegal alien. I want to thank everybody here. We have a distinguished personage, Mr. Ted Hayes in the audience here. Why don't you give him an award? And Eric, you know, I'm willing to spit on the picture of Karl Marx, tattoo a American flag on my forehead, and join the Aryan Brotherhood. And all Bush has to do is include you among the exerverts called up for the war. You are a turncoat. You used to come and speak in front of thousands of people against the war, and now you're willing to go over there and kill thousands of city attorneys.
Mr. Walsh, if you please, sir, we have council rules which ask you to address the council in general. So if you please, and please not, and sir...
Yes, that is what the law says.
Law does say that, and please...
Right in front of you.
Resist from defamatory. Thank you.
Tell us why you want to go and kill women and children.
Sir.
You want to have me arrested for talking about...
No, no, I would just ask you to please...
Arrest me for talking about the war and your complicity in it after you turned coat. Arrest me. Ladies and gentlemen, and I'll finish by saying, you won't see any of this in the LA Times, because here's a picture of the LA Times receiving a free Hollywood Walk of Fame star worth $20,000 to keep their mouth shut. And who's standing there? Mr. Labange. And who is on his knees?
So that'll be...
The publisher of the LA Times. And when one man gets on his knees to another man, we know what's going on. Thank you.
Just as a point of information, Mr. Walsh, that was, as a point of information, Mr. Walsh, that was on private property, and it was paid for completely by the Los Angeles Times. It wasn't a part of the usual Walk of Fame. Marvin Stewart is our next speaker. And after that, we will have David Hernandez.
Mr. President, we're going to come as a group, if you don't mind. Come on, everybody.
Mr. Stewart, go ahead.
Yes. I want to say good morning to this body of politics here this day.
Good morning.
As I noted upon earlier, you was honoring the veterans, soldiers, soldiers who honor their oath of office, which has got me here today. My name is Marvin Stewart. I serve, I'm a member of the Minuteman Project, and with host of other organizations, CCIR, Christmas Attic Brigade. I'm here this day because I serve on the Board of Directors of the Minuteman Project as director. Some of you already, you should have already received a copy of our resolution. This resolution is being brought and being presented to the City of Los Angeles and to the City Council, mayor and all included. Your direct violation of your oath has caused harm to come unto the people in this municipality and the state of California as a direct result of you not enforcing the laws of the land of the state of California, as is outlined in the resolution. As a direct result of that, you have come forth with a slanderous, a demeaning resolution dated February 3, 2006, a declaration signed with some socialist organization in this city here, denouncing the Minuteman Project, an organization, the CCIR SOS, of concerned citizens. I remind this body of politics that our Constitution says, "we, the people." You see, you are answerable to us, and not us to you. And that's the Republican form of government, in case you forgot. So having said all of that, you have our resolution. Because in fact, the actions of the Los Angeles City Council and the mayor have gone on record in the resolution and the declaration, you are now held accountable, liable, and this, because of the controversy, this matter will have to be resolved in a court of law, and so let it be.
David Hernandez is our next speaker. Thank you. Our next speaker is David Hernandez. Thank you, sir. And then Ted Hayes will be after that. Is Mr. Hernandez here? Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. And I want to thank the members of the council that remained in chambers to hear us. Good morning. My name is David Hernandez, and I would like to briefly comment on a few of the disturbing proposals in the Declaration of the City of Los Angeles. I'll begin with number two, to support the human rights and humane treatment of undocumented persons as part of the tradition of fighting intolerance and bias. What about supporting the rights of all individuals, those you agree with and those you disagree with, as part of the tradition of fighting intolerance and bias? And second, recognize and publicly denounce xenophobia. Xenophobia. First, who decides who is and who isn't xenophobic? And what piece of legislation or article of the US Constitution or California Constitution or the city charter allows this city council to start diagnosing its citizens with any phobia? Third, anti-immigrant bias. Again, this is not anti-immigrant. We here today are probably the most pro-immigrant people in this country. This grassroots movement is about illegal immigration. It is about petitioning our elected officials to take seriously the problem of people coming into this country illegally. And finally, to monitor and respond to extremist groups who advocate bigotry and racism. Well, who's compiling this list? Is ANSER on the list? Is La Voz de Asitlan on the list? Is MECHA on the list? You know, the point of all this is bring to light, to bring the incriminating nature of this declaration. Nothing here serves the people of Los Angeles. It serves special interest groups who want to see their agenda implemented. And yet again, the members of the LA City Council have failed to see this for it really is, an attempt by certain groups to suppress the constitutional rights of free citizens. And by adopting this indictment, because it's not a declaration, it is an indictment. You are sending a message to the residents of Los Angeles that if you are to speak out against illegal immigration...
Thank you, sir.
...they will face consequence.
Just to let everybody know, we have the clock there to try to stay consistent with two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Our next speaker is Mr. Hayes. And then after that is Jim Gilchrist will be next.
My name is Ted Hayes, homeless activist, civil rights activist of the Christmas Attic Brigade. I brought to you a, another declaration of Los Angeles from the KABC radio talk show host. I would like to read it. Declaration of Concerned American Citizens. A. Citizens of the United States have a right to speak out about the negative impact of illegal aliens unlawfully entering America. Voicing concerns about what may happen to America if illegal aliens continue to cross the American border does not make you a racist. C. Expecting elected US officials to protect America's border, economy, and culture is reasonable. D. Citizens have the right to inform authorities when witnessing illegal border crossing and the expectation that these same authorities will uphold the law of the land. Based on the foregoing recitals, 790 KABC calls upon all US citizens, local and state officials, to do the following. One, treat every person, whether citizen or illegal alien, humanely. Two, recognize that opposing illegal aliens entering the United States does not make one intolerant, racist, or xenophobic. Three, monitor and report to authorities those persons or groups who would speak to prevent through intimidation those US citizens who are watching the US border for illegal crossings. Four, hold to the highest standards of dignity and justice of all law enforcement officials, judges, and politicians who work in areas related to deportation, detention, and immigration. And five, recognize the need for a safe and secure United States of America. I present to you Jim Gilchrist, founder of the Minuteman Project.
Good morning, council and mayor in your absence. I'm Jim Gilchrist, founder of the multi-ethnic, multi-ethnic, multi-ethnic Minuteman Project. We are essentially the world's largest neighborhood watch. Specifically, we deal with immigration, law enforcement, advocacy. I find your resolution counter to the visions of our founding fathers. I find your resolution counter to the visions of our founding fathers. This has weighed very heavily on my mind. When I created the Minuteman Project, I set out to make it multi-ethnic, all-inclusive, because I firmly believe in the universal application of the rule of law. That applies to everyone. And speaking in behalf of millions of Americans, I find your resolution, gentlemen and ladies, is very abusive of the rule of law.
unconstitutional.
unconstitutional. We'll be held accountable.
We can resolve this illegal alien invasion crisis in a reasonable manner within the rule of law. It can be a very positive cooperative thing, or it can result in a very negative, very hostile thing. I'm doing everything I can to resolve this problem within the rule of law. And I have none of you members of the council to thank for any progress we've made, but I do have members of law enforcement to thank, because if it were not for these men in uniform, I would not be allowed to speak. I would have to wear a bulletproof vest. I would have to worry about the safety of my family. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Our next speaker is Donna Doherty. If you could please, if I could ask folks to just take their seats, we have other cards, but Donna Doherty is our next speaker.
I'd like everybody, please, my name is Donna Doherty, Griffith Observatory Access Initiative. I think you all have a copy of this paper. Would everybody take a look, and please don't time me while you're looking? If you don't have a copy of it, and I see most of you aren't paying attention.
Could you have it, Ms. Doherty? Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, if you've got this piece of paper, this is the one piece of paper that you can find when you go to the Griffith Observatory now. If you will look at this piece of paper, it says exactly what Recreation and Parks told us two years ago, that the West End, the ramp on the West End, and they also have the East End ramp now, that was new, that that is for the disabled. Clearly discriminatory. We still, with, now we're up to $96 million. When I was up there yesterday, I was told it's 96, not 93 million anymore, from the people of this city and from the state government, 6 million from the federal, 2 and 1/2 million. We're up to that amount, and we have no access at the front four doors, call them north doors, whatever you want to call them. We don't have anything there. I would bring to your attention, we have a member of the police force, Christina Rapati, who was shot in the spine and is now a paraplegic, almost a quad. She was on TV not too long ago with a beautiful new home built for her. And, you know, how far does she have to go to ever come back again? Should she not be allowed, as a member of the Los Angeles Police Force with her husband who is on the police force, and their children, should they not be allowed to go in on a lovely ramp or a sloping walkway into the front four doors of that building? They shouldn't be made to go over, like so many people have been made to go over to that elevator that houses that can take about 12 people in it up to the observatory, or downstairs. Thank you very much. I hope you have happy holidays. I have my letter from the mayor here.
Thank you.
Will pursue us next year.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Barbara Ko is our next speaker. Is Barbara Ko here?
Yes.
Ms. Ko? Okay. Nightingale? Somebody? No? Michael Hunt?
Good morning, City Council. Back on the record regarding the 4215. We're in our final phase of probably being at City Council. I want to announce my candidacy for the 11th seat coming soon. Our district has failed a portion of our community, so it's not a luck thing. My candidacy is 500 strong, and my congregation is 35,000 strong. My legalese is even stronger in the United States District Court than really what's going on here. But when you make promises to certain communities and have individuals in your inauguration that you turn around and arrest for doing the sole thing that you really have, like Ted Hayes says, "We, the people," and this constitutional rights, it's really lewd and ludicrous that we would have a council guy going against our constitutional rights. And I told him before he even signed that initiative that I will come after you regarding this bill, because it's in violation of people's constitutional rights. Not only will I not come after you, I'm going to run for your seat. And not only will I run for your seat, I will win. Agape's 35,000 strong, and 500 signatures for me is overnight. The right thing will take place in 11th District, even if I have to manifest that and make it happen. And see us in court on January 8, with all the civil rights violations and the First Amendment rights. The judge advanced our case to January 8. If I didn't know what I was talking about, she would have never advanced it. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Next speaker, Matt Downe.
Thank you. Just make my weekly appearance. I want to ask, the council members can take down these awards, because they're all hiding behind them. I want to look everyone in the eye, tell them what's going on right now. It's going to be a bleak Christmas for a lot of artists and performers at Venice, because they're not getting told the truth about this ordinance, because no one here even understands it, and we've proved it. But this is the latest thing, you know, you, let's put it on the agenda, get outside council for this one, because here's your city attorney telling us, and I'll quote, it's page nine of their opposition to our preliminary injunction, at line six, "Nothing in the city's ordinance prevents plaintiffs from displaying their products on the boardwalk." Period. Nothing prevents them. However, gee, look what I found, a bail receipt for an African-American, Leroy Butler, on Venice Beach, June 2006, and it says, "Charges 4215, L.A. MC, Display Items." And he's an artist, and a performer, and he's African-American, and he's getting arrested for display. However, Mr. Jack Weiss, if you're listening, you want to be the city attorney, maybe you can do better than this guy, who says nothing.
Sir, if you'll address the council directly, please.
Oh, please, come on, it's Christmas time. You're not going to give me any tangible latitude in this one, Mr. President? Look at it, nothing prevents display, but there's arrests for display of African-Americans who are artists and performers who are meant to be protected by your ordinance. So it's going to be a bleak Christmas for all of us, but I don't want to bring you down with that. I hope you all have a lovely time, and everything's just jolly and merry, and goodbye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Aguilar. And after that will be Gracie Taylor. Welcome.
Okay, what I'm here for is job creation. I want to state for the record that nothing stops a bullet better than a job. Nothing stops interracial gang wars better than employment and creating employment. Employment is very crucial to our communities, especially when we got minimum wage jobs everywhere and no living wage jobs, like the hotel workers are discovering right now. Home Depot is a necessity, because survival is a necessity. Eating is a necessity. Paying rent is a necessity. And 240 jobs will provide stabilization for Glassell Park and Cypress Park. I urge City Council, this is a willing sell between two willing partners.
I'm sorry, sir, I have to interrupt you under our Brown Act. If you'd like to speak on item 21, you can do that.
Well, I want to speak about job creation in general.
Okay, if you keep that in general, you can continue, but if you get specifically on something on the agenda.
Okay, well, all I'm going to say is, nothing stops a bullet better than a job. Nothing stops a bullet better than a job. Nothing stops a bullet better than a job. Remember that, City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gracie Taylor is our next speaker. After that will be Zuma Dogg, and then Matthew Preston Schubert is our last speaker for public comment.
In the name of Jesus, I stand before you this afternoon or this morning. My name is Gracie. I happen to have children in service, grandchildren in service. Give an honor to Martin Luther King's son, who said, "You'll get in a house." I haven't got that house yet. I looked up, I said, "Lord, what is this?" I'm down on Skeeter Road, my roof was a sky. This is the one who got the house. Judgment and commitment order. This is from DeBrook Bartlett, Kansas City, also New York City. Illegal alien in possession of a firearm and transporting drugs. He was given a float back to Jamaica. What is he doing in the United States with houses? This is what I want to know. I've been coming here ever since Pat Russell was the president here in this building. My folks have fought war here in the United States. I'm almost 100 years of age. I couldn't be a bad tenant. The judge was in my apartment when I was trying to cool down things concerning the gang bangers, and they have jobs. Now, I want to know, why am I homeless? I don't have a place to live. I work for the city schools, the LA beaches and harbors, I work for the state parks, Real Rogers Home, and I am homeless. I've been working all of my life, and I'm not getting my social security. You know why? Because Latino female, you same social security number. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Our next speaker is.
Can you pass this to the city council, please?
Yeah, we'll make sure we get that. The Sergeant-at-Arms will collect that for you. Zuma Dogg is our next speaker. We'll make sure we get somebody. Can we have one of the Sergeant-at-Arms take that from the previous speaker? And then after that will be Matthew Preston Schubert.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Welcome.
Yes, good morning, City Council. It's been a while, been a while. It's good to see everybody here. I just came out of, just had some business to do, so I thought I'd stop by. Last time I was here, I was seated in this bench over here, not warned, just carried out in handcuffs, where I suffered nerve damage to my left hand. To this day, it hurts. And I know that everybody here is, 10 of you are witnesses. And, you know, this is not funny at all. I was offered a deal. The deal was, hey, Zuma Dogg, plead guilty to a misdemeanor and serve 10 days on Caltrans and stay out of the location for two years. That's what this is about. Here you have the one person in the city who showed up to all these meetings, has outspoken so hard on the radio, committee meetings, LA Times, Daily News, blogs. And that's the person that they drag out in handcuffs, some crazy cop that squeezed my thing so hard that I got permanent nerve damage. That should not be happening. And I hope that everybody here, however much you might like to get Zuma Dogg out of here for speaking out against your shady policies, I hope nobody here is happy that I've suffered physical damage and a decreased quality of life and in my sleep, and when I reach for my keys, and if I walk too hard, and constantly throughout the day, I'm reminded of a brutal police brutality excessive force arrest. Okay, you can laugh all you want, but that shouldn't be happening. Okay, and I was not warned, and I was not removed for the day. He said, "Oh, from now on, it's straight to arrest, and we're starting right now." But guess what? It's not December 9th yet, okay? And the rules haven't been posted, and it wasn't a willful disruption. But look, it's all about trying to keep, hello, City TV, it's Zuma Dogg. You read about me in LA Times, Daily News, City Beat, the LA Weekly, KFI, KABC, the mayor's Sam Blogg. I've been featured on PBS and VH1 for talking about these people. They dragged me out of here and said, "You can be, you got to plead guilty and stay away for two years." Well, you can't keep me away for one day. I'll see you January 2nd. Merry Christmas.
We won't be in session January 2nd, but we will be back in session the following week. Mr. City Attorney, for the record, did you want to establish about the warnings just that were, that occurred, since that was brought up as testimony?
Yes, he was removed for disrupting the meeting, in violation of Penal Code Section 403. And he was gently removed by the Sergeants-at-Arms.
Following warnings. Matthew Preston Schubert? Welcome, Mr. Schubert.
Good morning, Councilmembers.
Good morning.
Unfortunately, I hate to bring this issue to disturb, to the council. I never thought I would have to. My name is Matthew Preston Schubert. I'm a 21-year-old male college student here at LACC and Los Angeles City College. I used to live in Detroit, Michigan. I was a ride-along with the Detroit Police Department. I was recommended down to the Los Angeles Police Department for a job. Unfortunately, as I came down, I was arrested 12/21/2005 by two officers involving, in the Wilcox LAPD station. These officers arrested me for allegedly being under narcotic use. I was put in the back of the station, I was taken under handcuffs. I had many, multiple proofs of information stating I was not on drugs. The officers refused to look at the information, in fact stating, "Mr. Schubert, we trust you. We trust that you are not on drugs," but still arresting me for narcotic, for narcotic use. As a result, I demanded a drug test. My drug test came back negative. The case against the, against me with the Los Angeles Police Department turned out negative, and I was dismissed. I was granted a factual innocence by Superior Court Judge in the 77 Division. My statement today, the City of Los Angeles deserves to know that they are going to be protected from any harm. The City of Los Angeles deserves the right to feel safe reporting information to our local police departments. This includes LAPD, LA Sheriff, Santa Monica Police Department. The City of Los Angeles deserves to know the truth about what happens in the community. The City of Los Angeles deserves to have necessary funds available and not pay for the LAPD's mistakes, Los Angeles PD, because they cannot pay for their own, so, and of course, our community has to pay for these, when these funds could go directly to other people. Thank you, Councilmembers, and I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much. We appreciate yours as well. That closes our general public comment for today. If we can return to the item called special, and let's wait on 16 through 18, if we can go to the next one.
Item 21 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Okay, I would move for a 10-minute public hearing if there's no objection on item number 21. Seeing none, we'd like to invite, we'll do five minutes for each side, and we'll do one minute per speaker. Want to thank everybody for their patience this morning. From the four side, we'll start with Robert Currie.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I support the zoning change. The neighborhood needs good jobs. I'm an attorney in private practice, and I have a client whose son works for Home Depot and had to give a second job to support his disabled mother. The allowing Home Depot to be built on the site would increase traffic terribly. I, already, the traffic in the neighborhood with Kmart closed is horrible. And as you know, LACC is putting in a satellite campus across from the site, and I think the LACC students need something better than a Home Depot to hang out at after class. And I would ask you to support the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Tony Buttka, are you, you here for it or against? Sorry, for, for the, okay, I'll hold on that. I'll come to you in a general comment. I want to just get to more people on the four side. Alisa Smith, if you'd like to come forward.
Hello, thank you. My name is Alisa Smith. I'm a 17-year resident of northeast Los Angeles, six years Glassell Park. I live on Casador Street. I'm just finishing, serving four years as a member of the Neighborhood Council, which I deeply appreciated that opportunity. I was also a member of the CAC for the Cypress Park, Glassell Park CDO. I've just spoke yesterday at Plum, and I gave you all copies, or your staff members' copies, of my comments from yesterday. And I really, I woke up this morning going, "I don't know what else to say. I've been working on this project for three years." So I just, I yanked out all my files. Here they are. And looking through my files, I found a map from the Department of Planning. It's got the council file number. It includes the Fletcher Square area, and it's dated 2002. I've been to numerous meetings with many people there, and I thank you for your support for the Department of Planning, the staff that has worked so hard on this document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Gutierrez is our next speaker. Laura Gutierrez is our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Laura Gutierrez, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Glassell Park Improvement Association. Glassell Park Improvement Association is a nonprofit improvement organization whose membership is made of residents and businesses in Glassell Park and the northeast communities. And it's, and in 39th year, I am proud to be elected as their president for next year. First, I wish to extend our gratitude to the Planning Department, the Planning Commission Board, and your esteemed colleagues of the Plum Committee for having the vision to listen to the needs of the community to approve the passage of the Fletcher Square CDO for your consideration. Over 4,000 petitions have been signed by constituents and residents who are in favor of this passage. With this passage of this tool, Glassell Park will be able to embrace it and continue the revitalization that has started with the L.A. River Plan, the Taylor Yard State Park, the LACC campus at the historic Vandy Camps Bakery. With this tool, Glassell Park can utilize smart growth, and we are hoping that you will approve passage of the CDO. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gutierrez. Richard Guerrero is our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Richard Guerrero. Been active in the neighborhood Cypress Park for many years. I'm here in support of the opening of the Home Depot project. I believe that the community needs the jobs that they'll be offered. I used to sell newspapers on the corner of San Fernando Road and Fletcher Drive. At the time, there was Vandy Camps there, and Kmart came a few years later. I don't think the traffic problem is going to be any problem, any worse or better than it will be with the new site there. I do support the project because I believe the area needs the jobs. Like one speaker said earlier, there's no better way to stop a bullet than providing jobs for the area. Kmart is the type of industry that can go into a community like Cypress Park, Glassell Park, Atwater, and the surrounding communities, and provide jobs that they can be qualified for. We've had projects in the past that went into the area, and nobody from the area was qualified to work there. So therefore, I do support the project, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Buttka, if you'd like to come forward? Come right there to the... Thanks.
Yes, my name's Tony Buttka. I have no economic or other interest in the matter at hand. I'd like to speak particularly about the issue of Neighborhood Councils as it relates to this project. You will notice that the project is in Glassell Park. It's not in adjoining areas. The current Board of Directors of the Glassell Park Neighborhood Council has taken no position on this project. That board is outgoing, and a new board with very little overlap will be taking office sometime in early January. Under our charter, I believe that the Neighborhood Council system is designed specifically to provide community input and to advise on these kinds of matters. I would ask that you continue this item for 30 days or 60 days to allow the new Neighborhood Council to take office and to have discussions and to come up with a position. Thank you very much.
From the against side, Francis Park is our first speaker.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and honorable Council members. I'm Francis Park from Latham and Watkins, representing Home Depot. We have a number of concerns with the proposed actions and have submitted lengthy comment letters that have been mostly ignored. Given our limited time today, I will discuss only a few of our concerns. First, the Planning Department failed to properly initiate the proposed actions. Second, the department failed to comply with CEQA. Third, the Planning Department has continually changed actions under consideration. Just yesterday at the Plum Committee meeting, we received two new ordinances that, for the first time, included urgency clauses. We have submitted a letter today objecting to the addition of these urgency clauses. There's no urgency in this case. This matter has languished for over six years. The findings for urgency cannot be made. There are many other serious deficiencies in process and substance noted in our written submittals that would expose the city to litigation risk and liability. Finally, we were told at the Plum Committee meeting yesterday that the new zone change and design overlay would not apply to existing buildings. We agree with this clarification. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Our next speaker will be El Art Camarillo.
I resolved the issues on 62, so I could take it off special if no one minds, so we can send staff back to work. 62, which is pro po. They're gonna do a better job of street cleaning and storm drain. Is that okay, Mr. Clerk?
We'll finish this item, and then we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Camarillo, please proceed.
Good morning. My name is Art Camarillo, and I'm a resident of Glassell Park for the past 41 years. I'm here to just ask you to delay or to reject the CDO since most of our community is not aware of the CDO. I know that started back in, a few years back, that the community was not properly outreach. Only they outreach a selected group. The current council, half of the council is active members, so the Home Improvement Association, which is the main group against the Home Depot. Their petition was made against Home Depot, not the CDO. And our soccer club submitted also 4,000 signatures to show the community their, their welcome, the Home Depot into our community, but that was selected to be neglected by both the Planning Commission and the Plum Commission. Yes, a lot of the signatures on the Anauak Soccer Club are renters, but they should have a voice in the community, so I urge you to please delay. Also, as a member of the American Legion and the Veteran of Foreign Wars, I commend you for your recognizing your veterans here in City Hall. But remember that also Home Depot does a lot of stuff for veterans too, also. They have a similar program of pay reimbursement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camarillo. Mr. Richard Green?
Yes, Chairwoman Perry, members of the City Council. I'm Richard Green, real estate manager for the Home Depot. I wanted to rise and speak about the issue before you. I speak in opposition to adopting the community design overlay and the Q conditions. It's a matter of investment strategy within the city of L.A. We look to the zoning ordinances and the building codes of the city to remain constant. We made an investment in this property. We're prepared to invest more, and we would like to ask that you vote down and are against the adoption of the CDO and the Q conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Art Polito.
Good morning, honorable councilmen and ladies. First, my name is Art Polito. I'm the president of Community Leadership Coalition, also president of Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. I'm here today to let you know that I am in support of Home Depot. It's a tremendous opportunity base for employment for young people in Cypress Park and Glassell Park and Atwater, the surrounding communities. And this gives our young people an opportunity to get job training, put a job center there that we could take the pool there for about four or five Home Depots in the surrounding areas, so we could create an atmosphere for employment for five Home Depots, not just one. And also, it gives us hope in the future that more of these kind of projects will be coming out that pays $12 an hour to start with benefits, and they pay for your college to help you. There's a lot of opportunity there. We have ours in Cypress Park. It runs fluently, and it's a hell of a job base. I wish everybody a happy holidays, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and that uses up all of our time, I believe. I will read the remaining cards into the record, Mr. Zuma Dogg and Mr. Jose Aguilar. And I believe our first speaker on this item will be Mr. Reyes. I read your cards into the record. The time is up, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we heard this item yesterday in Plum. This is an item in which, if we were to put this in the context, this is an area that essentially is bursting at the seams. We have an average of 20,000 to 25,000 people per square mile. We have a strong need for jobs. That is true. But there's a whole issue of how we change our environment and address these pressures caused by this density. Currently, we have a community college right across the street where a majority of the Q conditions are being directed. But in the context of the community design overlay, what we're trying to create here is a shift from an industrial-type-based neighborhood to a neighborhood that is now going to experience a 40-acre park, new housing, the whole revamping of the Riverfront District in Los Angeles. We have a new high school being planned, so the issue of safety, the issue of compatibility is crucial. So I stand in support of my colleague and his efforts in trying to make sure that we can create a destination, a place in which we can cause relief and create an environment that all neighborhoods should have, especially in this corridor. And true, we have traffic problems, traffic issues, but that could be said probably throughout the whole city of Los Angeles. The fact is, we're trying to alleviate it with our call for projects, MTA. We have improvements that are coming online. This is work that we've been establishing for the past three to four years. It's coming together. And what's exciting about this corridor is that we will have a whole new high school, community college along with the park, in line with a whole new vision of what this neighborhood can do. Jobs can be created, but we need jobs with careers. We need jobs that provide access to mobility, not basic jobs that minimize career advancement. So I encourage your support to come in line with what this committee should receive and should get in the future. It's part of a greater vision. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, and thank you for those words, Chairman Reyes. And thank you for the Plum's vote on this and the City Planning Commission, and the good work of the Planning Department. And colleagues, I ask you today to uphold all of those previous decisions and that good work that's been done. I want to thank members of the community, some of whom are for the CDO and some who are against, but many members who have been working on their own dime and their own hours, bringing this together and making sure that we have something that we can be proud of in an area that really is a case study for bad planning. For those of you who don't know what we're talking about, San Fernando Road and Fletcher, right next to where the old Vandy Camps site encompassing where the old Vandy Camps Bakery site used to be, right off of the two freeway, close to the Los Angeles River, in Glassell Park, adjacent to Atwater Village. We have an amazing opportunity here, and that has been made even more promising by the efforts of Councilmember Reyes and his staff and the efforts of the community to save the Vandy Camps building that was going to be knocked down for, I believe it was a home base store at the time, but instead, that significant piece of architecture has been kept. And through the good vote of the people of Los Angeles Community College District, some of the bonds for construction is resulting in northeast Los Angeles getting a Los Angeles City College campus there. It's significant not only because we need the jobs, as was said by people on both sides of this, but we also need to have education in people's neighborhood. Within a small distance, and again, due to the good work of Councilmember Reyes and the school district, we have, when the high school will be built just down next to Taylor Yard, a primary school, a middle school, a high school, which will probably tie into things like northeast Los Angeles and the Los Angeles River, and now, a community college campus, all within an area where people grow up. When we look at building strong communities, it's about really reinforcing the idea that people can grow up in a community, not be bussed off to schools, even as they go into higher education. And in my conversations with the great new president of Los Angeles City College, Stephen Radian, I know Mr. Reyes and myself would like to see programs that really build on all sorts of things, whether it's retrofitting homes to make them be greener, whether it's looking at hospitality industry and the good jobs in the hotel industry that can't be exported out. We have, I think, some ambitious plans. Mr. Reyes has also been working on the possibility of a MetroLink stop there to build on what we are doing. In short, colleagues, the community design overlay isn't really about any one company. I know Home Depot is here, and Home Depot's been a great company even in my own district in Los Angeles. In Hollywood, we love to have them there. We have to work through problems, day labor issues, streetscape and other things. But it really isn't about any one company. In fact, more specifically, it's about good design. And so I only say that because I do think that if people bash one company or embrace it, it's really not about that. It's not about any one individual today. It's about making sure we have good design and a good community there. It's one of the most trafficked intersections. There's a lot of storefronts there that are not the most inviting. You have sex shops. You have people who are behind, and strip clubs, and away from the boulevard because you have parking lots instead of actually things that will encourage pedestrians. I see a vision five years from now, when we have LACC's campus there and the high school built, where people will grow up in Glassell Park and walk on San Fernando Road and walk on Fletcher, and where Atwater Village and Glassell Park will not be cut off from one another. And this community design overlay allows us to do that. So I ask for unanimous support on this today. I think that the future is very bright in Glassell Park and Atwater Village, and I want to thank everybody for their hard work. This doesn't close off any future possibilities for anybody. It just says, "Let's make sure that we do it right."
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I just want to ask Mr. Garcetti on this here, is there any street improvements planned for Fletcher? As you mentioned, it's a horrible intersection.
Sure. We recently added the left-hand turn arrows, which was a big problem because we had backing up on Fletcher and on San Fernando Road, so we worked very hard, and DOT was able to install those. We hope through some of the, we know LACC's development will have streetscape improvements on Fletcher in front of the former bakery site. And on this site on the north side, which is where the old Kmart would be, we'd love to see that, as well as on the other two corners, so...
Would there be any street widening?
Street widening has not necessarily been proposed. I think LACC is doing a bit of that, but that's in Mr. Reyes's district, so I'll defer to him.
Yes. No, on your side, where the Chevron is?
So far, no. There's no...
Well, I wouldn't say that here. Is San Fernando...
Let me answer your question, Mr. Labange.
Okay, it doesn't prohibit it.
In terms of improvements, we're looking at linkages that continue to improve all the way from Avenue 26, San Fernando, all the way to Fletcher and San Fernando. So traffic is like water. It'll go where it can. How we control it, how we alleviate it, depends on how we can look at its perimeter. So right now, we have a call for projects going into MTA to widen San Fernando in certain sections. As it gets to Fletcher and San Fernando, we hope to, we already added the left turn lane. We hope to widen the streetways right in that corner, so we can enhance the turns and alleviate the congestion.
Because the bus that stops there is a very busy bus line on San Fernando. It sometimes backs it up to Northeast Police Station, which is about a half a mile plus on that area there.
And we actually did try to get into the MTA call for projects to get all the way to the Glendale border this time, but we couldn't because of the MTA's own deadline, but we expect the next call for projects to do that. We also hired Kathy...
You know where the next call for projects is? I just found out today. It's like January something, so we all should put that on our thinking cap.
And one last thing, Kathy Sarah, who did all the streetscape improvements on Glendale in Atwater Village, has been hired by us to do Fletcher Square as well. She used to work for the Department of Transportation, but to help plan with the community how we could do all those streetscape improvements.
Right. I just remember as a child, there was no underpass there. There was an arm that came down, and I think a man came out physically, as I remember, because Fletcher Drive was the connector between the central part of Los Angeles to Pasadena. And you'd have to go Fletcher Drive to York Boulevard to get to Pasadena. And my Aunt Lucy, who lived to be 95 when they built the Glendale Freeway, she asked me in a very descriptive way, whatever happened to Fletcher Drive, because it changed so drastically.
You should know we added AT SAC to the system, that particular intersection to the AT SAC system. And this, hopefully, community college can afford to do all its improvements. And if it can't, we have to find other ways to fund that.
Yeah, have them get rid of that golf course on Melrose. That could help too. And also, I know this is good for the fire department. They're right there at Task Force 50. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein.
The representative from Home Depot? I just have a question. How many Home Depots do you have in the city of Los Angeles?
I believe the answer is 13, and we are processing an application for a relocation.
And three of those are in my district, in the third council district, and I would just publicly state that I'm very satisfied with the operation. So we had a little bump in the road, met with the president, and resolved all the matters. So I just want to say you're a good neighbor to the community, and you do good service for the community with the charitable organizations out of Home Depot. So I just wanted to offer my support for Home Depot and the good work they do and the people they employ servicing the folks.
Thank you. We appreciate that recognition.
Okay. Mr. Reyes? Mr. Reyes, for the second time.
Move on, please. Thank you.
All right, and clear the board. There are no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, or Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next order of business.
Madam President, do you wish to take up item 62? Mr. Labange said he's good to go on that.
Mr. Labange.
The Department of Public Works answered the questions thoroughly, so we should move forward on this. They got to do a better job of street cleaning than 2007.
Thank you very much. Want to open the roll on 62, then? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next item.
Item 35 is called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
All right, Mr. Rosendahl.
35?
25. 35.
35? Thank you, Madam President. We're in the process of identifying a trail and making it the Nancy and Dick Riordan Trail. It says Dick and Nancy, so I need an amending motion just to switch it to the Nancy and Dick Riordan Trail. Dick Riordan, in the midst of a family situation, helped us create this trail that all parties came to agreement on. As you all know, Nancy Daly Riordan was before our council last month, and we declared November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Nancy and Dick have been incredible and are incredible contributors to our community, and I ask unanimous vote in naming this trail the Nancy and Dick Riordan Trail.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for your encouragement on this effort here, and I know this is a major linkage. You mentioned the work with Mr. Edmondson from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I think what, and it's a holiday spirit of what it is, if this recognition goes forward. No other couple in Los Angeles is so much for children as Nancy and Dick Riordan and also health enthusiasts, cyclists, et cetera. So, I just want to support it greatly and move forward and hope you invite me to the dedication of the trailhead once it's done.
I sure will, Tom.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? Not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Yeah, and we wanted to do that forthwith-
13 ayes.
But if we have to amend it to the Nancy and Dick-
Everything's forthwith today.
Because it says Dick and Nancy on the paperwork.
We'll make sure that that paperwork has the right order, and everything today is forthwith.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next item, please. We had public hearings on all these items here, as is in the agenda. Next items, please.
Item 39 was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer?
And there is an amending motion that has been circulated on.
Okay.
Do the vision and then go straight to the rest. Thank you, Mr. President. This item was heard in Budget and Finance this past Monday. It's for the purchase of a building in Bull Heights to create a mini civic center where local residents can go and obtain services provided by the city and as well to receive community-based services. The Chicago Plaza Building was specifically selected because of its location across the street from a new police station, across the street from a new mini park that was just completed this past year, and across the street from a library that we will soon renovate. You know, people asked, why have this mini civic center not too far away from City Hall? You know, it's not only a matter of distance. It's also a matter of the type of people who live in the area, people who already feel disenfranchised, people who are public transit dependent, and people who oftentimes need to have these services a lot closer to home. The building itself has been under works for purchase for the past few years. These are, the final funding was made available through MICLA funding, and we hope that this could go forward as soon as possible. We have a number of tenants at the building who are providing necessary services to the community, and we hope that through this purchase, we will get started on the completion of this mini civic center. I do have an amending motion that would address some of the issues and concerns raised in the Finance Committee, specifically issues related to the renovation and the stacking plan. The stacking plan is still being worked on as to what city services and nonprofits will be in the building. That should be completed in the next three weeks with a report back to City Council. And what the amending motion will do will actually help us take care of any issues associated with the renovations that will be necessary once that stacking plan is finalized. I ask for your aye vote, unanimous vote on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mr. President, do I have to specifically ask that we adopt the Budget and Finance report on this? Is there-
Mr. Clerk, is there conflicting reports?
No, the Budget and Finance is what's before council today.
Okay, and so, and the amending motion 39A will be attached to that automatically?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. We do have a public speaker card, but we have had a public hearing, so I'll read that name into the record, Jose Aguilar. Any other council members wishing to be heard? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please. I'm sorry, can we call the special meeting agenda while we are now past 11?
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business?
Item 86 is an item for which public hearing has been held. The Energy and Environment Committee report has been circulated.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on item 86? If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Next items?
Item 87 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll call that special for card from the public, and next item, please.
Item 88 is the closed session item, and I do believe is a recommendation from the city attorney to receive and file that matter.
I also will move that. No objection, we'll open the roll. Let's vote on it. Do we need to? Okay, if they're without objection, then we'll receive and file 88. Next item?
That would conclude the items on the special agenda.
Okay. Have we taken up 89, too? On the continuation agenda?
89 is still on the desk for-
It's still on the desk. Okay, let's return back, then. The next item, please.
Item 42 was called special by Councilmember Zine, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Okay. Mr. Zine, did you want to be heard on that or just for the amending motion? On item number 42? This was the media reprogramming item? Did you call it? Okay, Mr. Parks is on the queue. I'm sorry. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask staff to come up on one item I need to be clarified. And I want to thank Mr. Weston on that amending motion. I think that clarified all of our concerns in committee yesterday.
You might call CRA about more information to handle.
I would just like to get one item clarified, and that dealt with the issue of, now that we have the pool established, how does that approval cycle work and who gets the approval and what does the council role in assessing or selecting those projects in that pool?
Well, what was sent forward with the committee was before you is there is a pool of money for the various projects, and in essence, the CRA would need to come back to the council for final approval as the allocation of the funding for the individual projects.
Okay. Let me ask, our CRA, I don't have my glasses in here. Oh, sorry. Let me just ask, and have a seat there. Just on the issue that's coming before CRA tomorrow, just that we all have a clear understanding that projects that are going to be coming forth to the board tomorrow are the projects that are in this pool that will find their way back to the council. Is that the CRA's understanding?
That's correct. There are two projects on the agenda tomorrow, Vermont Seniors and Amani Fay. Both constitute loan agreements or amendments of loan agreements and grant agreements and would have been back to the council anyway.
Okay. Do you have a comfort level, because there was some discussion in the recent weeks as whether you've gotten all the information necessary for those approvals before your board?
There's still some clarifications we need to work out, but we think we have most of the issues worked out, and there may be some late-breaking information coming in this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you recognize the chair? Mr. Weston, do you want to? You're good? Okay. All right. No other members wishing to be heard. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, and like all items that will go forthwith today. Next item, please.
Item 49 was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, item number 49.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Councilmembers, this is a very important item that calls for the city to draft state or to advocate for state legislation that will allow our city to regain back some of its zoning ability regarding those facilities that provide six beds or less for seniors, for drug rehabilitation, and a number of other uses. Right now, state legislation provides and gives licenses to certain senior facilities, certain drug rehabilitation facilities, and others without any type of local hearing, due process, or city input. The problem is when we have an over-concentration of these types of facilities in one particular neighborhood. This was brought to my attention by some members in Eagle Rock, which found that there was a number of senior care facilities going up in their neighborhood. But as we looked into this, we realized that there are other types of services, not just senior care facilities, not just drug rehab facilities. These are very much needed services in our neighborhoods. However, the issue is over-concentration. What this motion here will do will allow the city to go up and find state legislation that not only look at the specific types of services, whether it's drug rehab or senior care, but also to cross-pollinate, because we may have an area that may have one senior care facility, three drug rehabs, and down the block, another senior care. But that's not considered over-concentration under the criteria used by the state at this time. What this will allow us to do is to, number one, hopefully give back some of the land use powers that this city has to look at these items when it comes to over-concentration, and to examine state legislation in a comprehensive manner to cross-pollinate all these different uses. We have here with us today a city official who will talk to us a little bit about what these different types of uses are and what the problem is a bit more specifically. Can you please hold my time? Thank you.
Okay. For the record, Gordon Hamilton from the Department of City Planning. The motion that we received asked us to take a look at the state regulations as it relates to the siting and the operation of group homes, residential adult care facilities, particularly under the category of elderly facilities. But as the councilman pointed out, under the Community Care Facilities program, there are seven separate, different kinds of facilities that are located throughout the city of Los Angeles, and there are additionally two others that are licensed by other state agencies. Some of these facilities require that there be a public notice or a notice to the local government with regard to the question of whether or not there is overcrowding or over-concentration in an area, and some of them are exempt. The motion that we received specifically talked about residential care for the elderly families that are 60 years, members of the family that are 60 years or older. That's one example of an exempt category where there is no notice received by the city of Los Angeles. So, the licensing of that facility is just decided purely on the basis of whether or not they meet the state's standards. There is no consideration of whether or not there is, it complies with the local regulations. As a matter of fact, the city is preempted from taking any action on those facilities. Now, just as a point of clarification, this is only for facilities that are six or fewer. And under the state law and under the federal law, households that are six or fewer are considered to be a family household and cannot be treated any differently than any other family household project in any residential district. I provided for you a table which provides the listing of all of these seven other kinds of facilities that are licensed by the State Department of Social Services, and have also provided on that listing of facilities for alcohol and drug programs that are licensed by the State Department of Alcohol and Drug Programs. And then, there is a ninth category, which is sober living housing, which does not require a license. There is no consideration by the city when those facilities are located in a residential district. These, again, are for six or fewer. Going over the threshold of six units would put them in a different category of consideration, requiring either a conditional use or a variance.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the CLA's office for doing some background work on this. This is a very important issue, I believe, that's going to affect all our neighborhoods. However, it is a statewide issue that needs some changes in state law, and it's not, I want to emphasize again, it's not that we do not want to provide these services to people who need them. It's just an issue of over-concentration to prevent over-concentration, and secondly, to allow for us to properly plan communities, we need to have some control as to where we're citing these facilities. So, hopefully, this goes forward, and we do all possible in the state legislature to use our lobbying ability to pass this and bring more comprehensive planning ability here more locally. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith is next, and then, Mr. Rosendahl.
Well, thank you. Just FYI, we had a bill in the legislature, I believe it was either last year or two years ago, on this by Mr. Ridley Thomas and Assemblywoman Strickland, and it actually got passed. The governor vetoed it because he wanted stronger legislation, and that has not come forward yet. So, we'll go back and talk to those legislators and see if we can get it back on the agenda, but we did do this exact same thing, and we got it through the legislature and then it got killed. So, we'll bring it back up and we'll waive it out of my committee and just go ahead and do it, because it goes along with previous city policy. And so, we'll go ahead and do that, and as a committee chair, I'll write some of those letters and ask them to reintroduce that legislation and maybe tighten it up with some of these recommendations for you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Six and under, and we want to have some say in where they go.
Right.
Okay. The state preempted that. How long ago?
Well, it's preempted under two counts, under the Federal Fair Housing Act and then also under the Health and Safety Code. I cannot tell you when those were adopted, but it is-
What was their logic in preempting it from local communities?
The, I cannot tell you. I was not there. The interpretation is that six in a household is a family, and so, it's perhaps that the state did not want to get involved in who lives under a roof. Six people under a house is a normal-sized house.
So, if we had legislation that changed it and gave us some say over it-
Right.
How would our say be exercised? I mean, a house is a house, and the people in it or not in it or in it or whatever.
Right. Well, there are a few layers of complexity, and there are a couple of ways of getting at this. Currently, certain uses require that there be a notification to the city and that the question is asked of us, do we think that there's an over-concentration? That might be one way. Another way may be that the licensing and the permitting that would go through the city and not be preempted by the state and federal laws. So, we would treat it as a discretionary action. That might be another way to do that. There might be standards that could be imposed, and that might be a third way to do that.
So, right now, the history of this fact that we have no say over it-
Right.
Has it created concentration in areas and community issues that we can empirically point out?
Yeah, this has been an ongoing discussion. It didn't start here. Cities like Malibu and other adjacent jurisdictions have concerns about too many facilities located in one location. Not a question so much as to whether or not this is a good use or a bad use, it's just the over-concentration question. As it stands now with the current regulations, if you put one facility every 300 feet, you're looking at two per block, three per block, depending, you know, on extreme cases. But if you waive that requirement and you don't consider that, as in the case of residential care for the elderly, they could be side by side.
Right. So, again, the categories that fit within the six or less, what are they?
Well, the three that require notification are adult residential group homes, just group homes in general, homes for children, and small family homes. The other categories, foster care, residential care for the chronically ill, residential care for the elderly, and transitional housing do not require a notification of over-concentration. So they can be side by side.
Thank you very much.
And in addition to that, alcoholism and drug programs, which are administered by a separate state agency, they can also be side by side.
So from your professional standpoint, it truly, as Mr. Riza is saying, gives us some input into it. We can look at character and neighborhood, and gives us some options in dealing with the issue.
Exactly.
That we don't have now.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Riza.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, yes, there was previous legislation, and I think that focused on only one category, which is sober living. What we're trying, did it focus on a number of broad, okay. What we're trying to do as well is to look at the over-concentration criteria for each one of those categories. They each have different over-concentration criteria. We want a more comprehensive, a better understandable system for all these six bed and unders that we're looking at. And so we're hoping to cross-pollinate each one and all of these at the same time. And I wanted to clarify that, because we introduced a motion that just looked at senior care facilities.
Right.
But the state legislation will actually look at all group homes, right?
Right. I think where we're at right now, as you've asked for some assistance as to how we could address all of these issues under the Health and Safety Code.
Yeah. And again, I want to emphasize, it's not an issue of nimbyism, but it's an issue of over-concentration. Too much of anything, any one thing, is a bad thing for any community.
Thank you. If we can open the roll on this. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 61 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. or Ms.?
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, Ms. Perry. We want to take something out of order.
I just wanted to request that you take 89.
Sure. Is there any objection, colleagues, taking 89 out of order? If not, there are four speaker cards on that. Do you want to hear those first?
Yeah, let's just have the speakers go first.
Okay. All right. First speaker is Bonnie Campbell.
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. My name is Bonnie Campbell. I represent a number of companies who are sued periodically in lead paint litigation. A little about myself, I served as Attorney General of Iowa, served in the Clinton Administration's Justice Department, and was nominated to the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. I'm here today to urge caution and very careful consideration before joining in a lawsuit against the former manufacturers of lead pigment. You should know that these companies have not done anything wrong, contrary to language you have before you. They did not conceal information. In fact, they voluntarily removed from the market, decades before it was banned, a product that was at all times legal and lawful. You should know that in nearly 20 years of litigation against these companies, in every case that has been finally resolved, courts have sided with the companies. Most importantly, I think you should ask, what is the rush? There has been no committee hearing on this issue. There is no report, no study, no statistics, no analysis. In fact, the language in the motion before you, much of it is incorrect. We have been told by the city attorney that there is no magic date for this decision to be made about joining litigation. I encourage you to give careful consideration. These are companies who care a great deal about their reputations. And more importantly, you have to ask yourself, isn't this really a problem of blighted housing by people who do not take care of the property they own?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Bonnie Campbell was that speaker. Antonio Diaz will be the next speaker. After that will be Abdullah Muhammad.
Mr. President and members of the committee, thank you for this time, and I represent the Sherwin-Williams Company, and I appreciate and commend the attention of this council and this body to a very serious issue of making sure that children are safe from lead hazards and other hazards in blighted housing. I have seen the substitute resolution that's before this council, and I think there are a number of inaccuracies there that if there had been an opportunity to have a hearing, could have been cleared up. First of all, in the actual substitute motion, it asks the city attorney to join into a lawsuit against former manufacturers of lead paint. There is no such lawsuit. The lawsuits that are brought in California do not sue the former manufacturers of lead paint. That is an inaccuracy that should have been discussed, I think, in other places. In addition, there are no lawsuits against former manufacturers of lead paint. There are some lawsuits against former manufacturers of lead pigment that have nothing to do with paint companies. Probably about 2,000 companies over history have made lead-based paint. There are very few companies that were maybe in the market of lead paint pigments that were used. There's also discussion of another lawsuit in Rhode Island. It's important that people realize that that lawsuit is nowhere near finished. It's not on appeal. It is still in the trial court level. And what this council does not know is that in that lawsuit, every owner of pre-1978 housing in the state of Rhode Island is a party to that lawsuit, a lawsuit brought by the Attorney General that now will involve third-party claims against the property owners of all pre-1978 housing. I think it's very important that this council not undermine the good work it has done in trying to address blighted housing. A lawsuit that shifts the blame away from owners of blighted properties and neglectful landlords to others undermines the good policies of this council. Thank you for the time, and I'd like an opportunity to have further contact with the council.
Thank you. Abdullah Muhammad is the next. After that is Julia Botelho.
Good morning, council. How are you doing? My name is Abdullah Muhammad. I'm the chairperson of the community group Acorn. We believe that Acorn, how long our children have to wait before this is litigated, how long they have to wait before this problem is solved? How long our children are going to have to wait before they can be healthy? Because this lead problem been going on for years and years. Yeah, this need to happen. This need to be put in a court of law and let the court of law make a decision. Lead paint was banned in 1978. Yeah, Sherwin-Williams is responsible. Sherwin-Williams is responsible, to be responsible for the cleanup, to help clean up. This lead-based paint been going around in our country for years and years and years, because that's all they made, that's all they manufactured, is lead-based paint. Sherwin-Williams is not the only company that use lead-based paint. But we need to settle this now, because our children been affected by this for too long, brain damage, asthma, whatever. Even adults get the same thing from lead-based paint. And we need to settle this now and get on with the business of the quality of life for our children, not only in Los Angeles, California, but throughout this nation. Because if we do not do it, who's going to do it? And we're not thinking about Sherwin-Williams' reputation. They should have thought about that on their own a long time ago. But it's about our children, it's about the quality of life, it's about their health. We care nothing about their reputation. We care about the future of our children, and they should care about them, too. So we hope you vote here today to go along with this lawsuit and let the court of law settle it. That's where everything else is settled. So let's take it to court and deal with it the way it should have been dealt with a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Botelho. And after that will be John Walsh.
Mi nombre es Julia Botelho, y tengo con un problema. Mi problema es que...
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Botelho, and I have a problem.
Que este año, mis hijos y mis nietos no van a pasar Navidad conmigo. Mi nietos dicen que mi casa enferma. ¿Por qué enferma? Porque está vieja, porque tiene pintura con plomo, y no es justo.
This year, my grandkids and great-grandkids aren't going to be able to spend Christmas at my house, and they say that my house is sick. Why? Because it's old and it has lead paint in the walls.
No es justo que las compañías como Sherwin-Williams no paguen por limpiar los edificios.
It's not right that companies like Sherwin-Williams would not pay to get this paint out of the buildings.
Ahora mismo tengo voluntarios que me están ayudando a quitar toda la pintura. Eso va a tardar, así es que no va a haber Navidad para mí en mi casa, que es su casa, ni para mis nietos, porque están limpiando toda la pintura. Como mi casa es muy vieja, quitar la pintura y volver a pintar con pintura nueva.
Right now, as we speak, I have volunteers in my house getting this paint out, and it's going to take some time, so we're not going to have Christmas at my house, because it takes time, and you have to be done with care to get rid of lead-based paint.
Yo les agradezco que nos ayuden, que me ayuden a mí, porque ya estoy muy vieja y ya no quiero, quiero vivir bien, mi casa con pintura nueva.
I would appreciate your help in this, because I'm older, and I want to live a healthy and safe life with safe paint on my house.
Feliz Navidad a todos mis concejales, Merry Christmas, y feliz año nuevo.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Walsh.
I'm an aggrieved party to this lawsuit. I've worked for the LAUSD since February 1985. I worked yesterday, and I'll work tomorrow. Now, I've taught in over 150 schools in the district, so I've been exposed to this lead paint. What I'm worried about here, and this would cost you nothing to join this lawsuit, they always ask to sign on, is that there's a little game going on between the mayor and Rocky Delgadoio. The mayor is not going to lobby for this, and The Times is going to keep quiet, because they are an excellent newspaper with a Walk of Fame star, so they've been bought off. This is what the mayor thinks. This is Delgadoio grandstanding. Therefore, I don't give a damn about the children and a damn about the lead. I'll pull back, I don't want to get involved. So this has been turned into a political football, and there isn't a person in this room that doesn't know what I said is true, including Patrick McGreevy and Steve Hyman at the LA Times and their editor, Jim Newton. But you won't print it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That closes our public comment. I'd like to return to Ms. Perry of the council to speak on this item.
Mr. President, if we could get the city attorney who's handling this matter to come to the table.
Okay. Is the city attorney here on this item?
Yeah.
Or city attorneys? Welcome to the table.
Okay, thank you very much. As you know, we try to be very careful and do the due diligence on issues such as engaging in a lawsuit before we actually draft the motion and introduce it. So if you could give the body just a synopsis of what this motion means today, what has led us to this, and what's the date, the time sensitivity is regarding this.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Council President, members of the Honorable City Council. We are here today because there is a historic lawsuit pending in Santa Clara that has been filed in 2001.
Hold my time.
The dangers of lead are catastrophic and are known. There is no safe level of lead that is acceptable by the scientific community. It is a neurotoxin that is confirmed and a listed carcinogen under Prop 65. The presence of lead products for use in paint and conings in homes and buildings throughout the city of Los Angeles and the state of California has caused a massive public health crisis that must be addressed. We are here today as a policy matter because the issue of lead and the presence of lead is unacceptable. We are very excited about the possibility of joining a landmark lawsuit that has been filed in Santa Clara with numerous other municipalities. As a matter of fact, we filed an amicus brief in support of the litigation in, I believe, 2004, and the lawsuit is proceeding. There is a timeframe in that December 22nd, there's a motion that the plaintiffs are going to be filing to amend to include parties. So speed is of the essence in this matter. The sooner, the better. The presence of lead is unacceptable in the city of Los Angeles and in the state of California.
Okay. Did you want to say anything?
And I'm sorry, my name is Patty Bilgan. I'm the supervising attorney of the Environmental Protection Section, and I'm here with my colleague, Elise Rudin.
Good morning, Elise Rudin, with the Environmental Justice Unit. We did file an amicus brief in 2004. The case went up on appeal. The appellate court did agree with the parties that brought the lawsuit. They have allowed it to go forward. It's been a very big nod. One thing in clarification is there has been a successful lawsuit against the lead paint industry, and that was in Rhode Island. It is, it went to trial twice. There was a verdict in favor of the people, that was the Attorney General's Office brought that. And right now, what's going on in that suit is, it's my understanding, they are now going over the issue of damages. So I believe there was an earlier comment that there has been no successful litigation, and that is not our understanding. We are very confident and very excited to join this suit. We think that this issue needs to be addressed. California is a state that always takes the forefront, especially in environmental issues, and we would like to see the city of Los Angeles join, the city attorney's office bring in this lawsuit as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, are there any further speakers in the queue?
There are none.
Okay. Otherwise, I would go ahead and close. And I think a lot of us are very astute on environmental justice issues, so I'm not going to go into a statistical recitation, but the one thing that compels me is when I was in Mrs. Botelho's home a few weeks ago and watching her neighbors and fellow colleagues from Acorn attempt to remove the paint from the frames around the window and the doors and the walls and the care that they took. Even then, I was concerned, because I know the dangers of releasing the particles. If it's not removed properly, if it touches your skin, if it's inhaled, you know, gets into your eyes, it still poses a risk in areas like mine and Mr. Reyes', areas where there's a high inventory of homes that are old, where people have great financial challenges and the lack of ability to be able to remediate those threats to their public health. I would say that this has been a very straightforward decision to make, and it doesn't preclude talking on the other side. It doesn't preclude having all parties gather together and meet with the city attorney to see what results we might obtain in terms of education and outreach and strategies for remediation. So this timeframe is merely an effort to preserve our opportunity, and it is an opportunity for the city attorney to go beyond the amicus brief and be a full participant. So with that, if there are no further speakers in the queue, I would just hope that my colleagues would support me in this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to be heard on this item? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, back to 61.
61 was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Okay. Mr. Labonge, item 61.
Ms. Hahn, I'm going to pitch this to you. Thank you, members. I know I called this special because our colleague had to attend a matter here. This is a matter of, I think, real importance of trying to help young people with the Department of Recreation and Parks, and I don't know if there's any staff here from Recreation and Parks. Is John Muckrey here or any staff at this time? But this is to ask that the opportunities for recreational programming be increased in Nickerson Gardens, Jordan Downs, and other facilities, and I'm going to ask Ms. Hahn to speak to it, and whatever we can do to help you, I think we should all help her.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Labonge. And colleagues, this is, this is just in response to a particularly violent period in the history of Watts, which sort of began almost a year ago. And between Christmas and January, we had about 19 gang-related shootings, seven homicides. It was a particularly difficult time. As you know, I just came back from another funeral for a young man whose mother also lost another son before Labor Day in a gang-related shooting. And the community came together, and first and foremost, we tried to stop the killing. We tried to stop the violence. We have my Watts Gang Task Force, that they're all called in the middle of the night if there's a shooting, they're called in the middle of the night if there's any kind of trouble going down, so they can get to the hotspot and try to calm people down and make sure there's no retaliation. But what also came out from these weekly meetings in my Watts office was a sense that services were not being delivered fairly, equally, particularly to the housing, the projects, Nickerson Gardens, Imperial Courts, Jordan Downs, Gonzac Village, that, you know, Recreation and Parks wasn't performing the kind of services there that they were in other parts of the city. And I even would go so far to say is I think there actually needs to be more effort placed in our housing, in our public housing projects than really anywhere else. And we found that, you know, budget was an issue, priorities were an issue, but, you know, gyms weren't staying open, there were cabinets that were locked that had all the balls and the bats and the nets in them. I mean, just things that are nuts are just not appropriate. So, basic, basic. And these young people were saying, there's nothing to do, you know, the gyms are shut, the programs aren't there. You know, the gyms are shut, the programs aren't there. The midnight basketball, that was very successful, really in cooperation with our LAPD, was not happening due to lack of funding or lack of priorities. So I just wanted to focus our Department of Recreation and Parks on services in the Watts community. The Watts Sports Friendship League, which has been going on since the time of Joan Flores, where kids are in, you know, a baseball league, just, you know, wasn't in the budget anymore. So, things like that, I think, are really detrimental. You know, yes, we need, you know, more police officers, yes, we need more gang intervention, yes, we need gang prevention programs, but I'll tell you, we as a city have got to put our resources into providing recreational opportunities for the young people, particularly in the Watts community. So, Tom just made a good, kind of a...
First run.
First run. When he held this in his committee, he instructed our Departments of Recreation and Parks to submit a letter to the Amateur Athletic Foundation to seek additional funding. I think it was like $54,000. Great idea. We want them to do it, but I will tell you, I want to specifically say that if in fact our Department of Recreation and Parks submits an application to the Amateur Athletic Foundation to seek additional funds, $54,000 or whatever, that if they receive those funds, I want that in this report today, word for word, that these additional funds will go towards new and existing recreational programs for the youth of Nickerson Gardens, Jordan Downs, Gonzac Village, and Imperial Courts Housing Developments. And specifically, things that have been dropped, like the Watts Sports Friendship League, midnight basketball, because I wouldn't put it past the department to get that grant and then just put it in the pot and spread it all around. And I think your intention was, you'd like to focus on the young people of Watts as well, and I think I would like to have that written into this, and in fact, if that grant comes through.
You'd like to make that amendment?
And it does not supplant any other resources that are already going to the Watts public housing projects.
Mr. President, I just asked. And Mr. Clerk, so I second that.
You wish to make that amendment?
Why don't I ask you? Why don't we ask, is there anybody here? You know, we should have the voting clerk, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the CAO right there in the front. Because $54,000, because I did a little research, where could we get $54,000 right now? You know, because the applications for any grant do take time.
Why, where did you come up with $54,000?
That's what they said it cost, you know, in my research. I did research on it. So, I think we move forward on this, but we maybe reconsider it our first meeting in January to get Mr. Muckrey right here to find $54,000.
Yeah, well, good. I just want to make sure that that $54,000 does not supplant anything else, doesn't go...
It's above, it's above, yeah.
It's above and beyond, and it goes to put back the programs that used to be there and to support ongoing programs. I really think we're turning the corner in the community of Watts. I really do. The community is coming together, they're working together, the city resources are starting to really be focused on that, and I think this is important, but I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for looking out for the young people of the Watts community.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. So we have an amended motion from Ms. Hahn, segmenting Mr. Labonge. If there's no objections, we'll add that to the file. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll.
I agree.
Announce the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item seventy-four was called special for Cards From the Public.
Okay, we have Cards From the Public. Mr. Walsh? John Walsh?
I hope I know the rules before I speak. If you spew race hatred against Hispanics and claim that illegal aliens are spreading gonorrhea through toilet seats, you're allowed to speak. If you bring up the Army Reserve and this after you receive awards, then you will be threatened with ejection. I just want to understand your rules. It's disgusting, but those are your rules. I just want to say that giving $500 to the fire department in Hollywood, you know, maybe they should take a look at the overcrowded discos, the fire hazards in all of the clubs in Hollywood, that the fire department is never there. I wonder what the fire department is doing. Are they shaving one another's genitals at three in the morning? Or are they eating Alpo and Grow Pup at three in the morning? I know that Hollywood Boulevard clubs are a fire hazard. Now, take away your straight razors and stop shoving and shaving your scrotums. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd, Matt Dowd. Khan. Jose Aguilar. Khan. Zuma Dogg.
Don't worry, City Council, I'll never leave you guys because I love you so much. Oh, is the microphone on? Hello? Don't make me have to yell too loud. Just turn the mic up, I could talk quieter. The one item I'd like to talk about, and hopefully we can have a little discussion here about the special event fees, a lot of them have been cleaned up, but this one is regarding Culver City Farmer's Market Tuesday, January 1st. It's $34,000. $34,000 for this farmer's market in Culver City. And this became a big discussion on the Mayor Sam blog that I write for, and here's my question. Is Culver City not in the city of Los Angeles? Now, I know part of it is. Hello, is everybody listening? Hello, hello, Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Weezer, everybody, I'm talking here. I need some information. I talk out a lot against your items, and I want to clear something up here. Okay, it's become a big topic on the Mayor Sam. Let's take this Culver City one, and maybe the city attorney afterwards could clarify. Culver City is not LA City. Now, I know there's a little bit of overlap, but why are we spending $34,000 for a Culver City Farmer's Market? Is that appropriate? I'm sure you can pull some legalese, that's what I'm asking for. People are watching on TV, it's a top story, everybody knows about this. So I'll yield the rest of my time right now. If you can use it to answer, why are we giving $30,000 to Culver City for a farmer's market? City Attorney, can you respond during my time? I'd like to clarify.
We'll have somebody talk to you on the side.
Okay, thank you. I'm not trying to be combative, but you know, I want to get to the answer, and then we can clear it up for the whole city and never talk about this again. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. There are no further comments, the public comment is closed. No one wishes to speak. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, announce the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item?
Item seventy-seven was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Very much, Mr. President. On Friday, April 21st, 2006, at approximately 12:00 a.m., 23-year-old Tyrone Howell and his 21-year-old brother, Christopher Anthony Baker, were victims of a drive-by shooting in South Los Angeles. Both brothers were seated in a 2002 Ford Explorer in front of 1340 West 60th Street when two African-American suspects exited a white Chevy Tahoe and began shooting. After striking the victims, the suspects fled on foot. The victims were taken to California Medical Center where Tyrone Howell succumbed to his injuries. Christopher Anthony Baker survived the incident. And again, and I don't know how many times I'm going to have to keep saying this, we can't stand by and let this happen. We need for the people who are aware of these individuals, who may be responsible for these crimes, to please step forward, because these individuals still pose a threat to the safety of our community. And I just ask anyone having information regarding either of these shootings, please call the 24-hour toll-free number at the Detective Information Desk at 1-877-LAWFUL. That's 1-877-529-3855. And your calls will be kept confidential, and anonymous calls are welcome.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Let's open the roll on the reward motion. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item eighty-two was called special for Cards From the Public.
Okay. Eighty-two is our next one, and we have a card from John Walsh on number eighty-two, and then Melrose Larry Green.
This is about your continuing wasting of city money on naming intersections according to political favorites. Now, Mr. Barris, I believe he already has a star on Hollywood Boulevard. He's been added enough. We're talking, I'm talking to everyone who's listening to this who works for the city. The mayor wants to cut the departments by 10%. Meanwhile, we're spending thousands of dollars naming an intersection at Riverton and Riverside on George Barris. Now, I'm old enough to remember him. 98% of the people don't amend them, and I don't want to spend a dime that could go to public service for Mr. George Barris. What is this about? It's out of control, I'm telling you. But don't worry, you won't see anything in the paper about it, you won't see anything in the paper about this, because the Los Angeles Times bought an award. Now, the, I'll finish by saying, you know, the, thanks for telling me, they bought it, because I don't believe the Academy Awards are bought. This is a phony award. Phony reporters, phony editor, phony publisher, and they're on the knees to Mr. Eric Garcetti.
Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker.
I'm in show business, I know how to work with microphones. Let me just totally disagree with what John Walsh said. I think the idea of naming intersections after celebrities from Los Angeles is wonderful. George Barris is a legend in the automobile, classic automobile business and industry, and automobiles in LA, whether you like it or not, are synonymous. And living in the 4th District, I think it's wonderful to name the intersection of Riverton Avenue, Riverside Drive in honor of George Barris. In fact, if you want to name the corner of Melrose and Highland in honor of yours truly, Melrose Larry Green, I would graciously accept that honor. And I also think that, on a more serious note, when tourists come to LA, they like to know a little about the history. We might name the home on Orange or Point Setia where Lucille Ball used to live as a monument. We might name where Little Richard recorded at 7000 Santa Monica Boulevard, which might be in the city of West Hollywood. Why, no, but another monument. I like these monuments. And you know what? You know, John Walsh has the same right of freedom of speech that I do, but I don't have to agree with him. And I think you're right on with this, and many, many more, many, many more. LA needs more historical monuments. Could you know I'm from New York? I'm not from LA. Could you tell from my accent? And I like to know about LA history. Do you know, for example, that Buffalo Springfield got its name because that little tennis court at the corner of Point Setia and Fountain used to be the home of the manager of Buffalo Springfield? And one day, David Crosby or Stephen Stills was walking by, and they found a name plate from a tractor, and they said, that's the name, great name for a band, and they named it Buffalo Springfield. Did you know that, Tom?
Where did Holly get the crickets from?
I don't know.
Okay, the walls in the garage in Texas where Buddy Holly played. Buddy Holly and the cricket.
Well, you see, this is why I love you, that's why I'm glad you're my councilman. Anyway, I have five seconds. Let me wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah for my cat and me, and everybody adopt a cat. Thank you. Konza, Konza.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. We appreciate your comments, and we will open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item eighty-seven was called special for Cards From the Public.
Okay. Ms. Perry, did you want to be recognized for something?
I just want to make a motion, and it doesn't have to be right now, but reconsideration on item forty-two, because at the time, the motion I had introduced had not been circulated, so I had a substitute, and it hadn't gotten circulated at that time.
Okay.
I can wait.
It has been circulated now, so we'll come back to eighty-seven in one second. Why don't we open the roll on reconsideration of forty-two? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And let's open the roll for the new amendment, a motion that circulated. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Return to number, item eighty-seven, which was called special for Cards From the Public. Zuma Dogg on eighty-seven.
Yes, thank you, City Council. My name's Zuma Dogg, and I am on the LA City website as a candidate for City Council at this point. Regarding the track maps, now, there's A through, oh my goodness, y'all, A through O. That's a lot, y'all. And you know that there's laws in the charter that City Council's been ignoring, they've been laws in effect since 1981 regarding condo conversions. And Eric Garcetti, last week, you said that you didn't know what these were for, whether they were for condo conversions or not. So the question I'd like to ask City Council, you got A through O over here, and there's laws regarding the condo conversions that may be affected. Have these all been passed with the new laws? Because here's one that says Canfield condominiums, number D. So if Canfield condominiums, you know, maybe that's under some of the restrictions of these, of the laws that you will now be looking at. So my question is, do these track maps represent the laws that you will now be looking at that you have been ignoring? Or is this still like just all sliding in under the wire, and it could be in violation of some of these laws? It's a question.
Are you done, sir?
Well, it's a question.
It's just public comment right now.
Well, I, under the Brown Act, I am allowed to ask a question with a simple answer that doesn't regard back, too much back and forth, if you could allow that. So my question, if I could phrase it while the clock's still ticking, is, these are A through O, and you got laws you're supposed to be paying attention to. Do all of these pay attention to that law, or are these all slipping under the wire still?
I would refer you to the planning department, they have the knowledge on what these are track maps for, so if you'll get in contact with them.
Can you put this vote on hold until we have this information? Do you guys know what these are for? That's my question.
That is the last comment. Do you have any other comments, sir?
Easy question. Do the council members here know what all these track maps are for? Each one of them, you have the info? Okay, so you feel good about them then, that they're in compliance? Excuse me, excuse me.
Mr. City Attorney, yes?
And for the record, public comment period is not a question-and-answer period, it's for public comment.
Excuse me, first of all, this guy here is talking while I'm talking.
Thank you. Let's go ahead on this item. Anybody wishing to be heard? Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items sixteen through eighteen were being held on the desk.
Okay. Ms. Perry, did we want to take those up at this point, or do you want to wait till after closed session on them? Are you still working? We've got, we do have one card for item eighteen.
I think you should just let, yeah, if you're okay with it.
Do you want to do that?
It's fine.
Okay. Do you want to take them up together?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. So sixteen through eighteen, and there's one public comment card, so I'd like to ask Brian Darcy to come forward to speak on number eighteen, continuing this morning's discussion.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is, it's not morning anymore, is it? My name is Brian Darcy, I'm the business manager of IBW Local 18 and representing about 8,000 workers at the DWP. I rise in opposition to this contract simply because it is the subject of a grievance which was filed in September. It's at the fourth step of the grievance procedure. The department still has refused to meet on it or provide the contract, and it will go to arbitration, and simply you are, it's not like this has become an emergency since it was filed in September, and the last communication was November 28th, but now, after telling us that the contract had gone away, has surfaced again, and still no meetings have taken place. So we are in opposition, we will continue to arbitrate it, but taking away the remedy by letting this contract is pretty much an anti-Labor Act, and each and every one of your votes will be part of that analysis. So, I urge that you vote against it.
Our next speaker is Candido Morris. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, sir, I want to thank you for serving your country, for saving lives, and for stopping World War III, so, thank you, sir. In regards, in the spirit of the holidays, I'll hold my comments on items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These items that are before us today are indicative of a longstanding issue that I have with the items that come to my committee and appear to be often in a deep state of disagreement or conflict. I am going to continue to publicly encourage both sides of these issues to respect processes that are in place. Not sure whether we're making any progress on that or not. I believe you, Mr. President, suggested this morning that we have a committee meeting and just devote it to the renewable portfolio, the timeframe. We spoke this morning about the legislative actions that we need to take as a council to enable them to achieve their goals within the timeframe that the commission has adopted and voted on and that the department has been asked to fulfill. And I am hopeful that if we, as a policymaking body, are able to get something on the record that we can actually do to help facilitate, that we can resolve many of the conflicts that not are, that are just here, not just here today, but keep occurring over and over and over and over within the context of my committee. And I want to be impartial, I want to be fair, but I think we have to remember that we are a public employer. We employ public employees. As a policymaking body, we have adopted a number of policy concerns that are associated associated with our, uh, employment of individuals in the public sector, uh, and that, I believe, as a policymaking body, in the broadest sense, we try, whenever possible, not to contract out, but to do as much in-house so that we can employ as many people and to build an expertise. Uh, and that when we do, if there are instances where we have contracted out, I think we need to maximize those opportunities by making sure that our employees are, are given the opportunity to avail themselves of a training and educational opportunity, so that as we move forward and bringing in, bringing online the renewable portfolio and, and technologies that are new and emerging, that we also simultaneously are developing a workforce that is developing and acquiring those skills as well. Um, so with that, I, I can, I can understand if my colleagues, uh, wish to vote affirmatively today, uh, for the record, so that I can make it very clear, I'm, I'm going to vote no today, but again, I urge you, you know, to follow, follow whatever reasoning you go through. Um, but for me, I, I feel it's very important, since I'm the chair of the committee, that I would like to do, I'm going to do this today, and, uh, that's the end of my comment.
Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker. I'm, I'm sorry. Then after that will be, uh, Councilmember Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we have the city attorneys come up and discuss this with us? Hold my time. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Tell us what this is about from a legal perspective.
Uh, Stan Snyder, L.A. City Attorney's Office. My understanding is sixteen, six.
Last year.
Sixteen and seventeen have to do, um, with the Pine Tree Project. Uh, a contractor was originally hired by Wind, uh, which was called, I believe, Wind Turbin Prometheus. Uh, they had problems in performing. Uh, we, uh, have had the board approve a termination agreement with them, and so there are two ordinances in front of you. One is for the balance of plant, and the other is for the transmission line. Um, I heard Mr. Darcy objected to number eighteen. I wasn't, I'm not aware if he's a, has opposition to sixteen or seventeen. As to eighteen, eighteen is a power purchase agreement, uh, where we're buying, um, hy, it's hydro power, um, from PowerX. Um, anything further you'd like to say, Dirk?
Uh, Dirk Broersma, City Attorney's Office. Uh, item eighteen is a straight, uh, power purchase agreement, uh, with PowerX. Five years.
Randy Howard. The, the design-build ordinances would allow us to go out and issue the RFPs in order to, to see what kind of contractors we could get in to do the balance of plant as well as the transmission line. We have DWP employees currently out building the Barron Ridge Station to interconnect to the transmission line. They're, they're doing that activity as we speak today. We have almost $200 million in purchases that we've made with the turbines. The turbines are being manufactured, they're arriving. We have turbine blades being put into storage towers. We have a lot of equipment coming in. We need to get these, these two design-build ordinances and the RFPs on the street, and we'll, we'll look at the contracts then, or what, what the proposals are, and hopefully make a selection and get these projects built. Uh, Pine Tree is about 1.4% of our RPS. It's zero emission energy that'll be coming in, and it'll offset other energy that has emission profiles for it. Um, the, the project, because we, we are building it, we are going to own it, we will operate it. There will be jobs, uh, IBW jobs for our employees.
And one of you alluded to Brian Darcy's, um, point. Would you say that again?
Well, I, he asked to speak on number eighteen, I know, and he indicated that he has opposition to that. It was my understanding originally on sixteen and seventeen that he signed off on the project, but I don't know if he has, they've been lumped together. I don't know if he has obje, we'd have to ask him.
Mr. President, do you mind if I ask Mr. Darcy to respond to this?
That'd be fine, if, at the podium, if you'd like to ask Mr. Darcy any questions, that'd be fine.
We've never signed off on sixteen and seventeen, however. Within the context of, of what they're asking you to approve, we only have objections to individual contracts that they're attempting to let. For example, they gave a multimillion-dollar contract to ABB to build panels that we do every day and any day. Uh, within the design-build portion of it, we, we want the project built, and, and we're not objecting to that. We're objecting to the way in which they dole out contracts within that context. We are objecting, and it is the subject of a grievance, to the PowerX contract. It is a direct violation of our contract to not go through the expedited arbitration provisions within the confines of Appendix B of our contract. They've refused to meet, they've refused to engage it, and they've refused to arbitrate it. Those procedures take 30 days. We started this in September, so for them to come here and say, "We gotta do this," they already gave up three months refusing to discuss it, so.
Mr. President, am I allowed to ask them to respond to that?
You can, you, this is your time, Mr. Rosendahl. You can certainly direct the conversation, however you like.
All right, would you respond to, to what Mr. Darcy just said about the process?
We do not believe that the PowerX.
Tell us your name for record.
Hold on, one, one second. Make sure we got volume there. Okay.
I mean, he said that, you know.
My name is Ron Deaton.
That they didn't interact, and you didn't give him, um, you know, the time of day.
We're trying to sit down now on the, on a, a series of arbitrations, but the key issue on this particular has, has been on the power contracts for, for renewable power of this kind of a power contract. We do not believe, we do not believe it is, uh, subject to Appendix B. We do not believe buying power, renewable power in the, in the fashion that we're doing is subject to Appendix B of the MOU. Clear and simple.
Explain that in layman's language. What is Appendix B?
Appendix B says that any, uh, uh, contract that involves, um, the, um, unions, uh, bargaining work, that there is an expedited process. They get to look at the contract, uh, for five days, and, uh, then if there is, uh, a disagreement, there would be non-binding arbitration, and then that non-binding arbitration decision would go to the, um, to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners for a final decision.
If the attorneys could respond, because here is a copy of this grievance, it's just handed to me for the first time. What, what's our reaction to this?
These are your contract lawyers, not your labor lawyers.
Ah, do we have any labor lawyers here?
I don't think so. I, I, again, um, our, the view of the department is, is that is not, is not, also is not subject to grievance, uh, but as a result of, uh, but we're going to, I guess, arbitrate that as well, or potentially arbitrate that.
So this grievance has to do with which one of the three items?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
I believe that's, I'm not reading it, but I think that's eighteen. Has to do with the, uh, the renewable power.
Does any of you want to talk about this? Would you say something?
Randy Howard. What, what item eighteen is, it's a five-year agreement for 50 megawatts of hydro power, again, zero emission power coming into the city that will help us reduce our emissions output. It is part of our replacement program, too, for the 150 megawatts of coal fired out of Mojave that we shut off last year. We have not yet replaced. So this only makes up about a third of that. It's around the clock, 50 megawatts that we can rely on, that will come into the city, and it will help us bridge us getting more renewables built. Our, our objective is to build, own, and operate more renewable facilities. This will help us bridge us during the next five years while we're in that process. So this will, this is a replacement as well for the Mojave power. Uh, one of the, the considerations the board needs to recognize is, as of January 1st, SB 1368 will become law, and this contract, as it's written today, uh, we probably could not proceed under that law, and, uh, we would have to renegotiate if, if it was not approved today. And that renegotiation would require, you'd have to identify specific renewable facilities. Right now, they have a large pool of facilities they're going to supply us with. We would have to renegotiate, and we think the price would go up maybe 20 or 30 million dollars after January 1st.
That's, that's interesting. But, Mr. Deaton, you know, the way they're outlining it here, they say they've been just trying to meet with you to talk about it. Is there any opportunity, maybe, that you could meet with them, just to put this to bed?
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, can we get a commitment out of you to meet with them?
Yes.
And see where this takes us, then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, what do we do? Continue the item?
Well.
Or not?
If, just so you understand, if the, if it's not approved today, with 12 votes, ordinance is passed, we, the contract will not be entered into, and we will have to renegotiate the contract. The contract will be for more money, and et cetera, so.
No, it's, it's a terrible thing to hear this, but, but why didn't you meet with them? You had a lot of time to do it. It'd save us the money, save, I mean, we wouldn't be in this moment right now. It's the last meeting of the year.
My view is, is that that is not an Appendix B. We discussed that somewhat, and, uh, and that, there is other ones involved in this process as well. So, we're going to try to work out more of a, um, global, global solution as opposed to item by item, but it's just a difference in interpretation of that MOU.
Well, I mean, I hate this 11th-hour stuff. We're over barrel, you know? We just, you know, we gotta make a decision. We want to save, we don't obviously want to spend 30 million more, but, uh, two grownups should be hanging out together, talking this through, rather than putting it in our face at this moment now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel the same that Mr. Rosendahl feels, is that it's our last day. This is laid on the table today. I don't see Mr. Darcy coming this off, this chamber very often unless there's something of importance and significant. And when a matter goes to grievance, to arbitration, there's a breakdown in the system. And my concern is, if Water and Power has employees to handle what we need handled in either two or three of these matters, I know one is buying power and the other is doing other activities, why aren't we using our city employees versus contracting out? Why aren't we using the people who are paid for by the taxpayers to fulfill whatever responsibilities there are? And as far as this power source that we want to get, this renewable, why is there a breakdown between the department and labor on that particular matter? Because it appears to me there's not been a communication. You say you communicate now, but today is our last day before the end of the year, and you say it has to be done before the end of the year, or there'd be greater costs. So why does it come to us now at this last hour and not before? So if you can answer those questions. The arbitration, the grievance, the lack of communication, um, why now? In other words, you got us over the barrel. If we don't do this, now we're going to pay more later. And it bothers me, and the same thing when it comes to my committee, where someone says it's urgent, well, the emergency is now put on me because they didn't bring it forward in a, in a timely manner. If you can please respond. Any of the people at the table?
Councilmember, um, I think what you've heard is items sixteen and seventeen, there, there are not grievances filed.
The grievance is filed, which is arbitration, now on eighteen.
I think the, the grievance, uh, what you, you heard was on item eighteen, uh, labor has filed a grievance on every renewable power contract we've entered into in the last 12 months.
So why can't we resolve those before it goes to grievance? Why can't we come up with a, a win-win with the representatives from Water and Power? Why does it have to result in a grievance and, uh, unfair and arbitrations? Why, why can't we do this in a, in a manner with the city employees, but we don't have to resort to that process?
I don't know.
Well, Mr. Deaton, you're the, you're the GM.
The situation is as follows. That can't be done by any, by, any city employee right now. There are no hydro facilities that we can buy and provide renewable power to this city using city employees.
None of them are qualified?
We have committed, we have committed, and will continue to commit, to build as many renewable power plants that we can do, but we are under, under the policy of trying to do this by a certain date.
Correct.
In order to do that by a certain date, you cannot build them. We are, the other sixteen and seventeen, and in fact, are building the Pine Tree situation. We will run it. We are trying to build it. The reason we're under the gun now is that we have, uh, the turbines on the way, and, uh, we're now doing design-build in order to short, short-circuit that, uh, that process and do it as quickly as possible, so we can build it and run it ourselves. You cannot find locations fast enough, get them permitted, design them, and then build them in the time constraints that we have. We are attempting to do that. In the interim, we believe we have to go out and purchase. We are doing to the best of our ability to do small purchases in terms of years. This is a five-year deal. It's a rebel, it is a good kind of power because it is 24 hours a day. It is not work that is, that we can do. My view remains that it is not under, uh, Appendix B. Three, but I do believe that we should do it, do the, to provide this service as much as possible with city employees. We are submitting requests for proposals in order to ask for and to get as best as we can proposals that we can, in fact, build or run ourselves. But we have no experience in this, and we also don't have any ability to do it.
And is there a disagreement between you and the union on that matter? The fact that you say we can't?
There's not a disagreement between us and the union on wanting to, to build and run as many as we can.
No, the fact is, you say we don't have qualified people to run it. They say, do they say we do? Are they on the opposite side of that, to say that we have qualified people to manage what you say we don't? Is that one of the stumbling blocks?
You'd have to ask them.
Mr. Darcy, can you come forward again? I mean, I wish this was two weeks ago or three weeks ago. It'd be a lot easier versus what we're faced with right now. You've heard the questions, Brian. If you could respond to those, please.
Not about qualified employees. I mean, these plants are not rocket science, especially a hydro plant. The, the issue is, is that they have refused, as long as Mr. Deaton has been general manager, to come to any global agreement on how we are going forward in terms of renewables. Our, my members, 1,000, 1,500 of them, are engaged in generating power in this basin and in, and in, uh, adjoining areas and even out of state. And they have never wanted to come to an agreement and say that our real intent is to be self-sufficient, which is why this department is still in existence, is because of its self-sufficiency and its ability to, to own its power supply. They have not spent any energy developing the projects that Councilman Smith is talking about that need to be done in this city. All we're saying is, we're not opposed to alternative or renewable energy. We're not opposed to any of that, but we want to be part of the future, not part of some promise. If you look at what they're doing, and I, I really encourage every single one of you to read everything that they put out, because they, 40% of what they're proposing is out of state, and the other 60%, maybe 20% of it will ever be owned or operated. They have totally abdicated on this subject. And so what we are doing is bringing coals to Newcastle, because we already have more capacity than we can peak at, but we're buying more power at, and in fact, this hydro deal is about twice what hydro ought to be paying, uh, or charging. So this baloney about we're gonna, it's gonna cost you more, if it costs you more than this, boy, you guys are really, I want to negotiate with you.
Have you been at the table discussing, and when's the last time, if you did?
We have seven very global issues that we are in total disagreement about, and he has not made any atten, I had to go to the mayor's office in order to get him to sit down. I went to court to get him to arbitrate any of the cases that were pending. So all this, "Oh, yeah, we're working through it," is simply not true.
So there's a gap in communications?
Yeah, I would put it that way.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hahn is next. Just as a, as a point of information, colleagues, um, unless, um, Ms. Perry changed her vote, which, you know, for all intents and reason, there's no, no reason that she would be, um, and anybody else who joined her, it only takes one vote for this, these are ordinances, for it not to be unanimous. This is just a time thing. I'm not lobbying one way or the other. That means that it would carry over to our next meeting, no matter what. So I just want to let people know that, okay? Um, as some, sorry? And.
One vote causes it to carry over to the next meeting.
One vote causes it to carry over to the next meeting?
Right, one vote causes it to carry over. Somebody can also withhold their vote on the first reading and then that stops everything and goes to a second reading automatically, okay? Ms. Hahn is next.
When I pushed my button, I had originally wanted a couple of questions asked and answered, and that's happened. I was basically going to say, you know, I'm uncomfortable too being here, last meeting, you know, of the year. I'm uncomfortable saying if we don't do it today, it's going to cost more money. But I'm most uncomfortable with the fact that, listening to my colleague, Jan Perry, she also felt uncomfortable at her, the last committee meeting, and if I understand it correctly, said, "I'm going to continue this, get together, sit down, talk, figure it out." Now, for me, there will probably always be disagreements between management and employees. That's just the nature of things. But I think for me, it's very bothersome that the meeting did not happen in the last three weeks. I think that's a hook that I can hang at least my no vote on, that I would have done a lot better today, even if you'd come back from the meetings and you'd still disagreed. So, I'm probably going to join my councilmember, Jan Perry, because I think it's true. We want renewable energy. You know, we get criticized here because we paid our DWP employees so much, and yet now we're talking about not giving them work, which according to Brian, they can actually do. So, I think we would feel a lot better at this point as we move forward, that you, we do all feel comfortable that there is a plan to include our employees in the future of changing energy needs of this city. And that doesn't feel like it's happening, so, you know, I'm not comfortable either. One of the questions I'll ask you is, why are these turbines on their way? Why did, why have you authorized the purchase of this equipment when this has not been approved? This contract has not been approved?
It's a little lengthy, but I'll try to make it very short. The department had entered into an agreement through an RFP process with an entity called Wind Turbine Prometheus, later became Horizon. They were the developer of the project. In about April of this last year, there were some concerns with management on their ability to perform as per the contract. The department ended up stepping in and making the acquisition for the turbines and the materials because there is such a backlog internationally for wind turbines. There's so much demand right now that the backlog is several years. And the concern was, we needed to get these turbines in in order to be online soon enough and then producing by 2010. So, we wanted to get in the queue of the manufacturing. Horizon was having some abilities, inability to do so. We stepped in. After we stepped in, determined there were some additional issues, we determined that it was in the best interest of the city and the department to terminate that agreement with Wind Turbine Prometheus, the developer. We have entered into a settlement. The settlement has been agreed to. It closes in January for those design build packages. They were going to do that work. So, now we're going back out. We've piecemealed it in a different way. We think we'll be more successful in getting this project built. Does that help?
That's, that's okay. I mean, it doesn't really help. I can understand, I understand your thinking. I don't think it really helps in where we are today. And this reminds me, colleagues, of another time when we were pressured, if you remember, by the airport about a contract, and we were told if we took the time to review it and look at it, we were threatened that it would cost millions more dollars. You all remember that one? But we stood firm and said, "No, if we're going to do it, let's do it right." And guess what? It came back and it didn't cost us more. We got better work and we got the employees that were already doing the work to continue to do that work. So, sometimes I don't always believe it when we're told that if we don't make the decision today, it's going to cost a lot more money. I mean, it may or may not. I'm more comfortable, colleagues, not approving this today. It sounds like it's going to be carried over anyway. I want, I want, you know, Ron, I think you need to sit down again, one more time, you know, meet with Brian. But I think it's important that we do have a comprehensive plan on the future of DWP employees, again, in this changing energy world and how they're going to be part, but as Jan said, how they're going to be given the skills, work, training to, it's unconscionable to me that we're going to be building renewable energy projects that are, that you're saying our employees can't, do not have the skills to build or operate.
No. What I'm, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that in the short term, that we have to purchase. I'm saying, I agree in the long term that we need, and in fact, Pine Tree is such a facility in which we're building it. But you cannot bring on that kind of power in this shorter period of time by building it. That's why this contract is five years. We had one of 16, but for the most part, they're all five years or around that amount to give us the time to locate places where we can in fact build and we can, we can operate after we build them.
And I don't think that, I mean, what you just said to me and to my colleagues, I don't think is, from what I hear, has been properly communicated to the employees.
I would differ on that.
Okay.
Mr. Labange.
I move we approve 16 and 17 and continue 18 to the next session. And ask that the general manager reinvigorate the Joint Labor Management Committee to work on labor issues. Got a second?
There was a second from Mr. Zine. We have three more speakers on the queue. Those speakers want to be heard or you want? Okay. Mr. Weezer is next and then Mr. Smith. After Mr. Weezer. Are you going to pass? Okay.
Just quickly then, what would be the effect of holding 18? Does that mean we can go now renegotiate this deal?
The contract before you today, would, the offer terminates, and if it was in the department's interest, we would have to go renegotiate based on the new law that becomes effective January 1st. It'd be several months until all the rules are in place for that new law, and we would probably see a 10 to 15% increase in the cost associated with the contract.
But you don't know that for sure. That's just an estimate.
On the cost, yeah. That is an estimate, and the contract today, if it was approved today, renewable energy would start being delivered on January 1st. Again, it would be zero emissions to the city of Los Angeles.
And that's an important factor, and I commend the mayor wholeheartedly, as this council has done, in picking a timeframe of 2010 to meet our renewable portfolio. But I think it's very unrealistic. I don't know if you can do it. What percentage of your renewable portfolio would this item 18 constitute?
This represents about 1.8 to 1.9% of the energy needs of the city of Los Angeles, so it would, it would achieve that amount. We are currently on our power content label. About 8% of our energy is being met with renewable energy.
So, you're talking different kinds of numbers here. What percentage of our portfolio would this represent?
It's 2% roughly of the power, but 10% of the renewable goal.
10% of our goal, which is a critical number. And we've given you an assignment and you're trying to reach that, and you've negotiated this agreement to give us that power, and you believe, as I understand, that that is outside the purview of union negotiation because we're just buying the power. Is that correct?
I do not think it's subject to Appendix A.
Okay.
B.
Well, councilmembers, you know, we've all asked this department to do a job. We said we want renewable energy. They're scrambling to find ways to provide it by the timeframe the mayor has set upon them. Mr. Darcy talked about the program I have and turning trash to energy. We have an RFP on the street right now to do that. It will not be built by 2010. You know, I'd love to say it will be done by then. It won't be done by then. It's not possible. And so, for the department to achieve its goal, they cannot build facilities in that timeframe on their own. You're not going to get EIRs done, you're not going to get partners, purchase, all that cannot be achieved. The only way to do this is purchase the power and find programs that can provide for us. I think it's foolhardy for us, if you believe in the renewable portfolio, to turn this down today. It's a five-year, it's just a five-year contract to get us over that hump. And I think that's an appropriate way for the department to behave. I don't like Mr. Deaton. I join with my colleagues in, I don't like last-minute decisions, but I think the information is obvious here. If we believe in the RPS, if we believe we want renewable portfolios, then we've got to do this kind of stuff.
Ms. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just ask a couple of questions. On the issue, if, as people have stated, they vote in opposition of this, does that put everything on hold until we get back in January on all three items?
As ordinances, they would, if they do still get a majority vote, they will still come, they would all come back for a second reading.
So, they could not effectively continue to operate until the ordinance was approved in January? So, everything would be in abeyance?
Correct.
But then, where's Tom Labange? Well, colleagues, I would make a motion that we continue it all until January, allow the department and the union to continue their discussions, and as someone mentioned earlier, to begin to work on that longer-term issue of a plan that includes department personnel. But to go through a vote today, doesn't appear that we solve much, and it appears that we're going to be here in January, either voting again on the same ordinance or continue to debate this. So, it appears that everything is, because of the lateness of coming forward, is something in which a lot of people feel uncomfortable, which means there'll be no progress today. And so, I would recommend, I would move that we continue it all until the first meeting in January, direct the general manager and the union to continue their discussions, and hopefully by January, we'll have more clarity as to where their disagreements are.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Second from Ms. Perry on continuation. Mr. Labange?
Correction, because I want to, when you have a motion to do something, what happened to my motion? Just out of curiosity.
It's still on the table.
It's still there.
Don't you act on it right there, then, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Not until the question's called or debate is over.
But I just said when I move, I just want to know technicality on that issue there.
Yeah, the debate, the debate continues when debate's finished.
I would just say instead of the first meeting of the new year, do 30 days from now because we have to have a committee meeting, I think would be appropriate, which would be appropriate to have that. What do you think, Ms. Perry?
I should have said this when I said the second, but I'd actually like to add in the language. This is a significant enough issue. I think it's important that we bring it directly back to the full body, and I will pull, push it through, wave it out of committee or whatever I need to do. I'd rather just bring it back.
Okay. So, let me ask a question. Why don't we do it the second meeting, okay, instead of the first meeting? The first meeting is on what date, Mr. Clerk?
January 9th.
January 9th, which is a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
After the 8th?
We can also look at the agendas, colleagues, and see what would be a lighter day, because if this is going to be something that we spend some time on, we may want to choose the day that has fewer items and sometimes the.
Also, in committee, we've got these here, and I think all members should see this here, just to see the wide menu, which the department is trying to get done in this timeframe of trying to do it all. And Mr. Howard, you explain that the rules may change with the new law?
Yes. SB 1368, which goes into law January 1st. If, if the regulations are adopted as proposed, would require that you have to identify each facility from which the energy would be coming into the future, and that's not the way that the current contract is structured.
Let me just ask a question. Hold my time on this one whenever that's supposed to be held. I want things done right. I want to see people work together, and I appreciate the work of the men and women of the union for Water and Power to deliver power to Los Angeles. On this question here, my main focus, like today, I want to see power approved off of Barham Boulevard and off of Third Street and in the Hollywood Hills, which unfortunately, because of other reasons, stress to the system, and heat wave wasn't approved. Are we competing for the same worker to build this, that is, to do the work in the city? Limits proper?
And continue it. Vote yes to continue.
I don't believe so. You don't believe so? You used to talk a little louder there, Mr. Deaton, when you're over here. You're Water and Power.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. So, I want to make sure, because I want to make sure we continue the efforts to build the infrastructure, and I really think, members, we need to hire 700 people to work in basin to fix the infrastructure, but this is a new area. Mr. Deaton shaking his head, said we need to do that too. I think it's real important. A lot of work needs to be done here. Water and Power, real important, that light, the water, and then the new energy that needs to take to feed the pueblo. So, this is going to be continued to the ninth or whatever you determine, one or two days there, Mr. President, on that, and I thank you, get back to working at this, but also work in basin, work in the older neighborhoods of the city as well, where infrastructure needs to be upgraded as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is next.
Clarification, perhaps a city attorney can say this on the record, what our vote means today and what it means if one person votes no versus a continuance, and how many votes are needed when it comes back to council.
If council does vote on the ordinances themselves and there's less than 12 members or one person, at least one person votes no, then they'll be carried over for a second reading on the first day back from the recess. At that time, the vote requirement would be eight votes.
If it is continued, just to finish the thought, if it's continued, it will require another first reading at some point, so it's a longer process. Anything else, Ms. Perry?
Before you go on, Mr. President?
Yes.
I know there was one colleague who wanted to break them up. I'm, he hasn't said anything yet. Is he going to say something?
Okay. We have, the motions that we have before us, just in reverse order, which is how we would take them up, is to continue?
Yes.
The second motion, which was made first, is Mr. Labange's to approve 16 and 17 and to reject 18 at this time?
Reject mine if the chair wants that. I mean, I don't know if there's, you said the voter are not there, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, the only thing.
Sure, Mr. Wesson?
The motion I would make is we just totally unbundle them.
Okay.
So that we would have three separate votes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
That's a procedural motion.
The continuation will be first.
That's a procedural motion, and it would not trump the continuation motion, which we'd vote on first, and then we would vote on them separately if the continuation does not go through. Okay? Mr. Zine, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay. So, we. Vote on the continuation of all of them first. That was the motion, I believe, Mr. Parks made. And then, if that does not go forward, we would then vote on each of them individually. Okay? So, what we have before us is a motion to continue to, and just to be specific on that, it was, right now, let's continue to our first meeting. We can always move, move the date past that. If there's no objection, we'll, all items till the 9th of January. Okay? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
Okay. That fails. Now, we have Mr. Wesson's motion to unbundle them, which there's no objection to. We will take these all then separately. So, item 16 is first before us. Please open the roll on item 16. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, one no.
Okay. That fails. Or goes to a second reading, excuse me. It doesn't fail. Item 17, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, two noes.
Let's carry it over to a second reading as well. And item 18, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, eight noes.
That fails, yes.
Could I go back to the first item? I didn't press my button, no on the first one.
Sure.
Sorry.
Why don't we just correct the record on number 16 for?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Perry has a no vote. Is it better to reopen the roll on that for the electronic file?
Okay.
Okay. Let's just do it one more time, folks, on item 16. Please keep the rest of your votes the same in 16. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Hahn had a no vote before. I think the machine is not registering it for some reason, so we will.
My light's on.
There it is now. It is now, okay. And that was, that will be then a 10-2 vote.
10 ayes, two noes.
Thank you. All right. Yes, point of information.
On a friendly amendment to have joint labor management work together on that, could we have a friendly amendment on that last vote? We got the majority. Is that possible, Mr. Attorney? Did I miss that, Mr. Attorney?
He's asking a question. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can you repeat that, please?
To have a friendly amendment to ask the joint labor management, which was very popular in Water Power years ago, be reinvigorated to try to resolve some of these issues. Could I add that to that? Because that was there, got lost.
I don't believe they're part of these agenda descriptions.[1752.83]
But it was a friendly amendment. Is, I know you're a friendly attorney.
It could be as a report back, a direction to the department.
All right. Mr. Deaton, would you take that as a friendly suggestion? Thank you very much.
Mr. City Attorney?
And then regarding item number eighteen, the, the options are for council to vote to receive and file it, or it'll carry over, it'll trail over pursuant to Rule 53 to January ninth.
Right. Okay. All right, nobody, no motion to receive and file, that will carry over then. Okay. Next item, please.
That would leave the closed session items.
Okay. In accordance with state law for items under litigation, we will now go into executive session. We will close members of the public, but we will come back and announce any actions that we take pursuant to state law, so we'll see you in a little bit. And to all the folks that are leaving the council chambers, have very happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, all the rest, and we'll be back in open session shortly. Welcome back into open session, everybody. We are here, we took action on three items in a closed session of a legal matter. Mr. Clerk, if we can take a vote on the roll. Colleagues, if you vote differently in open session, we have to announce those differences, but otherwise, we do revote on these in open session, so I would remind everybody of that, starting with item eighty-three, which was the, the last one we just voted on.
On item eighty-three, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award in the amount of 135,355 in the workers' compensation case entitled Michelle Kemmerer versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
That's the same vote as before. Next one is eighty-four.
On item eighty-four, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award in the amount of 104,305 in the workers' comp case entitled David Clinton versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Colleagues, this is number eighty-four. Ms. Han, I, Ms. Han? I know that you took a particular vote in closed session. If you wanted to make that the same in open session, this is item eighty-four, just to remind you. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, four noes.
That passes. And then item eighty-five.
Item eighty-five is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of 247,500 in the case entitled C.G. Rose versus City and Crystal Kane versus City.
Okay, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Colleagues, now's the time for announcements. This is our last meeting. I would reiterate to our viewers and members of the public that this is our last meeting until January the ninth. Again, our council offices and the city offices are open on, on all non-holiday days, so people are here and we will be working. We will merely be in recess from our regular scheduled council meetings. And colleagues, let me just say a note that it's been quite a year. We met 127 times this year, and we spent hours, obviously, discussing the people's business here and a number of members of the public coming and testifying. It's been a very productive year. I want to thank everybody for an incredible year of service to the people of Los Angeles, and we very much look forward, I know, as a body, in 2007, continuing that good work. So congratulations to everybody, and my personal best wishes for happy holidays to this entire council. Other announcements? Mr. Labange?
Four forty-six is winter solstice, and the winter comes in, although it has been a little cool this week, but we want to wish everybody a great winter solstice, and for those in the listening audience here, want to hike up to the observatory to see the wonderful sunset. If it's a beautiful day like today, ride into the Great Pacific Ocean. Please meet us at 3:30 across from Roosevelt Golf Course on the 21st of December for winter solstice.
Ms. Han?
I'd like to invite all my colleagues to join me on January first at noon, Cabrillo Beach, where we will join sometimes close to 500 polar bears as we take a dip in the ocean for the first day of 2007.
And by we, do you mean you? So you'll be doing that?
I said, "Join me."
Okay.
Join me.
Not to you, but join me in the water.
Yeah, no spectators.
Okay.
If you come, you must go in the water with me.
Mr. Zine has already volunteered himself. He, he seems to be the most naturally warm, so. Mr. Wizar?
I think I saw that a few years ago, where I did see Ms. Han go in, so she does go in. I've seen it on television before.
I do go in.
I simply want to wish everybody happy holidays. It's been a wonderful year for me. November 29th was my first year anniversary. Thank you to all my colleagues around the show. Also, want to thank 14th Council District for all the support and work we've done this last year to make the 14th Council District a better place to live, and I look forward to next year accomplishing even greater things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wizar. It's been great having you on council. Mr. Labange? Oh, you already said it. Mr. Parks, sorry. Mr. Parks?
I just have a couple of events in the Eighth District. The Lula Washington Dance Theater will have their 26th Annual Kwanzaa Festival Thursday, December the 28th. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. They also have two concerts planned, one on December 29th at 8:00 o'clock, and another on Saturday, December 30th at 7:00 p.m. And also, the Black College Expo is coming to Los Angeles, January 13th, at the Convention Center.
Other announcements? Yes, Mr. Rosenfeld?
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Labange's winter solstice. We all know that winter solstice means it's the shortest day of the year, and in the old pagan tradition, that's where they got a green tree and they put candles on it to begin the light. The Christians took it and said, "Well, we're going to have Jesus's birth commemorated then because he's the light of the world." But the bottom line is, the darkest day means the beginning of the light the next day, and we're all blessed, actually, to have the light, and I want to wish everybody here happy holidays, and everybody is children of, of what I consider the white light spirit. We're all God's children. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Zine?
Also want to offer my happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, Happy Hanukkah. Oh, Jose Wizar wants me to put on the reindeer hat.
You've imposed that upon the people of Los Angeles.
The reindeer hat, did that once before, for the reindeer hat. To wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a Happy New Year. The, the folks, military, are people who are deployed across the country. Let's remember their families during this holiday season. There's many children and military families that need your love and support during this holiday season, so keep them in your thoughts. And I know that the Highway Patrol is still looking for toys, for their chips for toys, and if you want to participate in that, there are many collection centers, Chips for Toys. They're desperately in need of toys this year, so please enjoy the holidays, looking forward to 2007, Mr. President. Thank you, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much. Do you have, Mr. Labange?
Good luck to the University of California, Los Angeles, as they go up on December 27th to the Emerald Bowl in San Francisco to play Florida, and good luck to the University of Southern California on the 1st of January, where they will play the University of Michigan in the Rose Bowl game, and great success to the City of Los Angeles, where our float will be in the longest-running float. The Rose Bowl Parade will be a great day on the 1st of January, and we're happy to have a float in the parade this year and celebrate the Department of Recreation and Parks' wonderful world of the outdoors with young people from districts throughout ours to ride horses down Colorado Boulevard. Great part of our tradition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and you're all invited. I think we sent you invitations and members of the public to our holiday party at our district office in the heart of Hollywood, at Hollywood and Western tonight from 6:00 to 8:00. If anybody feels like dropping by on the way home, please, please do. Are there any adjourning motions? Start with Mr. Wizar. If I can ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn in the memory of Roger Eugene Brooks II. He was a good man who died in an unfortunate tragic accident. Roger was working on his house in Chrisline, California, when a fire broke out and he was electrocuted. He passed away tragically at age 31 in the afternoon of December 2nd, 2006. Gene, as he was known, was the beloved son of Officer Glenda Brooks, the director of the Hollenbach Police Athletic League in Boa Heights, which provides positive alternatives to many youth in the community. He's also the son of Roger Brooks, and he is the loving husband of Caroline. He was a proud father of five-year-old Connor and four-year-old Colin. Gene was an amazing human being and who loved life very much. He constantly showed his love for his family by saying, "I love you," and was never too tired to come home and play with his kids. Gene was a competitive athlete throughout his adulthood and won many statewide honors both in high school and in college. He loved the outdoors and horses and was described by his family as a true cowboy. He is remembered by his wife as a blessing in, in her life and her soulmate. May his laughter, loving ways, and the pride he gave his family be a comfort to all who were fortunate enough to know him.
Thank you, Mr. Wizar. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ernestine Tina Mayfield, born in October 1929 in Stamps, Arkansas. She was the widow of late, great songwriter Percy Mayfield. She also was a personal songwriter for the late Ray Charles for many years, very active in a variety of organizations, such the NAACP, the ACLU, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, also the Urban League and the Wall of Tolerance. She received numerous awards from a variety of governmental agencies and recently was awarded the Legends Award during the annual Mike Awards on June of 2006. Her services will be Saturday, December 23rd, 11:00 a.m. at First AME on South Harvard.
Mr. Labange?
This morning at 1:02, there was a tragic accident on Las Feliz Boulevard, where two cars were going at a rate of speed down Las Feliz Boulevard, and one tried to pass. They were family members, and there was a car that was going the speed limit, and as the faster cars approached it, they left the roadway and tragically crashed into one of those old historic Theodore Pines on Las Feliz, just west of Verbont. Three people were.
I believe one of them was an employee of Mr. Reyes's office.
All right, Mr. Reyes.
Make sure that you knew the connection as well.
Thank you very much. I will withdraw and ask my colleague, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Mr. Labange. With deep heart, heavy heart, that we adjourn in Matthew Nicholas Hernandez. He was our intern, 18 years old, along with Matthew Merrill. As Mr. Labange stated, they tragically died this morning. Matt started working with us in the summer. Great young man. Matthew Merrill was a baseball player at Paterson City College, All-Star. It's a shame that their life had to be taken this way. Matt was a key youngster who put together our help, put together our river convention this past summer. Bright young man. The younger brothers are in critical condition.